Damn, already starting?
Yo.
Yo, what up everybody? Oh, we got the links right there. Damn, I got my Band-Aid and shit, but yeah, we got the links right there. Um, y'all can click them, the YouTube, the stars, to buy stars, everybody keep asking, how do you buy stars? The link is right there, but I'm Lou McLean.
I'm Eka G.
Earl Rogers, yo, let's go everybody, man, let's go, we here today. We got a special guest today, we actually have two special guests, yeah, but we don't, we only got one of these. I didn't, uh, I know, man, I know, Ronald's gonna be mad, he's gonna be pissed, man. So yeah, we gonna have to make him one, but one of our special guests right here is DJ Craig G, ninety-three point seven in Hartford, Connecticut. Y'all already know what it is, yo, what up G? What up Sharice? Earl, oh shit, Earl, I just see you watching it. What up everybody? If you up in here, man, say what's up, say where you from, everything, man. Aw, man, it, it's been a long weekend for me.
For me too.
Yeah.
Well, it's the week, it's not the weekend.
Well, the week, I mean, two days, the weekends, uh, we get, we get what, Friday, Saturday? No, we get Thursday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday, Monday, Tuesday. That's what, seven days, right?
And how many, how many days you been in the gym?
I've been in the gym every day. Besides the weekend, I hit her up and I was like, yo, let's go to the gym.
He's gonna hit me up.
Wow, wow.
I hit you up.
Yeah, and I was like, yo, let's go. Oh, but we got our, um, let's show them our cups.
Oh, we got some new cups.
What up, uh, Ms. Triple Fuller? The, oh, wait, I said Ms. Triple, it's triplex, she's the, um, the Polly.
Oh, she's the Polly girl?
Yeah, the Polly, one of the Polly girls, y'all, if you ain't here, share this, man. Yo, listen, but we got, um, is mine?
Uh, I don't know, I just.
Hey guys, thank you for joining us.
Y'all, if you ain't here though, don't forget to share this, um, we actually received the gift from, uh, from who? Um, damn, I think, that's yours. Um, it's cups, actually, um, oh, it's a car and Gucci, something in here.
Oh, did you put stuff in here?
Oh, um. Jazzy Jewels.
Jazzy Jewels, Shonda McCree's in North Carolina.
North Carolina, thank you for these, wow, all the way from North Carolina, but Earl, I think that's mine. Yeah, that's mine, bro.
How come that's yours?
Wait, wait, that, that got, wait, no, no, what's inside, what's that, what's inside?
They got this one here.
Are these charms for the cup?
I think so, for the straws.
Not the little box one.
I don't smoke, bruh, that's for you, bruh. That's for you, bruh. Hold on, what you got? How you get a pen?
Isn't that so cute, and a pen?
You got a pen and I got a Gucci.
I had a Barbie one.
I got a Gucci one, right here.
And a Balenci one.
Yo, this is nice right here, man, wow. Wow, thank you for this. What's her name again? Um, Jazzy Jewels, all the way from North Carolina.
That's so sweet, thank you so much.
Thank you for supporting Park Car Combo, somebody, yo, listen, G, one of y'all, one of y'all rich dudes out there, buy us some mics, man. Yeah, we need some mics, man.
Some sponsors.
Yeah, we need some mics, man.
Shaw needs some sponsors and your girl needs one too, okay?
Not one of the Polly girls, oh, she said that.
Uh, yeah, one of the Polly girls, we didn't know what to call you, honey, so.
Yeah, we didn't know, we didn't know, but if you ain't here, share this, um, this shit is probably gonna be backwards right here, this shit is backwards, man, huh?
You about to have some revenue.
Uh.
We're gonna post that afterwards.
Yeah, we gonna post, we gonna take a picture of it, this is nice right here, wow, Park Car Combos.
I love it.
Look, you ain't even gotta drink out of that no more soon.
I know.
Now you got your own, I think it's, uh, it was straws in the bag too, Earl. Yeah. It's straws in the bag?
So y'all, we got, we got two, oh, oh, this is the straw for the cup.
Yeah, this for the cup, oh, that's a metal one right here.
Stirring one and it's like actual straw.
Oh, this is the.
Okay, okay.
I love gifts.
Yeah, this is nice right here, this is very nice right here. Thank you, thank you to Jazzy Jewels, all the way in North Carolina, man.
That's so sweet.
Thank you, don't forget to share this though, don't, it's, it's a hookah. This is not a hookah, bruh, it do look like a hookah tip though, but y'all, listen, our first topic, Will Smith.
That scared, that was me and that scared me.
Come, uh, PTSD.
Did y'all see Will Smith, so apparently his ex-assistant slash best friend.
What's his name, um?
What is it?
Bula, Bula Tyler?
Name, put it in the chat.
Somebody comment his name, Will Smith, uh, best friend.
Best friend, assistant.
Hey Chrissy.
What's up, A, what's up, Mark?
Hey you.
What up, everybody tuned in?
Yeah, what up?
When I got, uh, I remember when I got my first cup, what up, Kev? Yo, y'all crazy, yeah, do anybody know the, um, Will Smith best friend?
He said, leave my boy Will Smith alone.
Who said that, Lost in? Yo, but that's what I'm saying, I don't, y'all.
Apparently, he says, the old, the ex-assistant slash best friend says that he walked in on Dwayne Martin, who was Gina's husband in real life, remember Gina from Martin?
Yup.
And he walked in on Dwayne Martin hitting Will Smith on the back.
And I seen him say he was murdering it. That's, yo, that's not, yo, man, that's not right, man, I don't, yo.
Rumors, look at this picture, y'all.
Come on, Earl, that's not, that is not right. He trying to say he was bent, he trying to say he was bent over like this, but yo, listen, he said murdering, like murder, he was murder.
Said murdering, he said he was murdering it.
I don't, you believe it?
No.
I don't believe it either, man.
The assistant, uh, did you see it?
I seen it.
The assistant, honestly, he's giving the vibe of like, he was in love with Will, that's what I got, like, he was in love with Will and he mad that he didn't get bent over, you know what I'm saying? That's what he was giving me.
And he stopped being friends with him, his name is Brother Bilal, Bu- Brother Bilal, B I L A L.
Jada said, Dwayne Martin tried to shake them down for some reason.
No, I don't think it was Dwayne Martin.
He said the guy, he said the guy tried to shake him down.
No, Jada said it was him though, brother, no, she, Jada, Jada said it was Brother Bilal.
Yeah, it was the assistant.
It was the assistant that tried to, um.
And I believe it.
I believe it too, so he was like, I'mma come out with rumors, whatever, if you don't pay me a certain amount of money.
Do y'all believe it? Do y'all think Will was doing the bending?
What y'all think, man?
Yo, listen, man, I don't believe it, man.
I don't even feel right talking about this, I feel like Will Smith was such a big part of our childhood, yo, like, come on.
Yeah, I did not watch the tape of Will Smith getting murdered, or whatever, don't tell me I watched the tape, Taz, man. I didn't see the tape, bruh. I wouldn't, I, Will ain't do that, man, Will, yo, Will is one of my idols, and I, and don't even pause, man, before anybody up here say anything, pause. Will did not do that, man, and, and it's sad that as a, another man trying to get money and stuff like that, I feel like he tarnishing Will's name. And this is all Jada fault, it's all her fault, it is, because you open the doors, the floodgates.
Okay, I can, I can kind of agree with that a little bit, I can.
She opened the.
She did open the floodgates of like.
Of, of destroying Will, and then she gonna say at the end, like she was Tupac.
No, not destroying Will, but I think this, you know, whole thing that she's doing is like, now anybody who has any information is like, or think, or says they have any information, they're like, well, let me get a quick check, you know what I'm saying? Cause she putting out stuff, so I'm putting out stuff too, and people are gonna believe it, you know?
Yeah, a- isn't that lady, um, Tasha K, isn't she being sued by Cardi B?
So she already was sued by, um, Cardi B, and Card, she has to pay Cardi B four million dollars, so now.
Four mil.
Now, Jada's also gonna be suing, but it's unclear if Jada's gonna sue Tasha K, or if she's gonna sue the guy.
Do we have that, I would say, do we have that clip, I don't know if you got that clip, whatever, if you wanna pull it up real quick with, um, with her saying it.
With, with the guy?
See Tony, no, no, um, oh yeah, with, um, Jada, yeah. Nah?
No, she just said it, she just said it real quick when she was walking to her car.
Somebody said, Elsa Lee said, I don't know why, but I see Will being curious and willing to do whatever Jada wants him to do.
I mean, I, I, I could have, like, listen, I feel like, honestly, I feel like a lot of men who have a lot of sex, and Will Smith is in a position for many years that he's had a lot of sex. He's, any woman that could ever be alive, he's been with, like, he's had any woman at his fingertips, I think that some of those men start to like want to experiment and do different things, I do.
That is not true.
I think so.
That is not true, that is not true.
You mean to tell me if a nigga been bending shit over forever, now he wanna.
Now he wanna test the waters, uh, yeah, he wanna test somebody hooty ho?
I'm not, I'm not saying that I believe he was with Dwayne, I, I'm not saying that, or I don't believe that, but I do think that, you know what I'm saying, cause it's like anything else, it's like drugs, like they call gateway drugs, right? Like, and people who smoke weed, once you smoke a little bit of weed, now the next, like, next year, you need more weed to like get you that high.
I, I can see that.
Sex is the same thing, like, once you have it all the time, the same way, it's like, eventually you gonna wanna start doing some crazy stuff.
I mean, he did?
Yeah.
What movie?
Yeah, Philadelphia.
That was it, that was?
Yeah.
Wow, I didn't know that.
That was the gateway.
Wow, nah, nah, hold up, I have a lot of, I have a lot of S E X, that don't mean I wanna get my booty played with.
Maybe not today, well, you said last time that you did like getting your booty played with.
But that's from a Latin female.
But today is the Latin female, tomorrow it might be a black male. You know?
No, 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 that's, that's, nah, look, somebody said, Jada is a siren, uh, she pulled mans and destroyed him. I agree, it's Jada's fault, I agree, it's Jada's fault, yo.
Said, why would Will's friend lie when he been around Will forever? I think there's some truth to it.
You gotta be subtle.
No, that's cap, like, 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 like Eka said though, like Eka said, um, it's a shakedown for money.
I think so.
Yeah, I, I believe so, it's a shakedown for money, because, like, you seen him, he, like, how you telling the story and then gonna say, he's getting murdered? You alright?
Yo, you didn't feel that?
No.
I'm the only one that felt that.
What was that?
What happened?
It felt like the car was moving. No, no, I swear, okay.
What's in that cup right there?
Yeah, you never a shroom? You ain't a shroom? You alright? What the, you just did that twice, yo.
I don't know what it is, my, my nerves, I don't know, y'all, my nerves.
Did anybody see the car move? I didn't see the car move. Yo, Po, come on, Po, don't do me like that, Po.
So Jalisa says, they used to swing and were open about it, so here's the thing though, Jalisa, if you read her book, there's a chapter where she talks about this, and she actually discredits all of those rumors, she said they were never true, like, people would say stuff about them, like they're swingers and stuff, but she said it's, that's, they never were.
And they never was swinging, right?
That's what she said, that's what Jada said.
See, isn't so much cap going on, and, and yo, don't forget to share this, man, please, don't forget to share this, and like, the next minute though, we definitely gonna actually have to send some stars right there, send the stars right there.
Did you send out the thingy?
I did, I don't, I don't know where she at, I have no clue.
I'mma have to start sending stuff.
I don't, where Tashay at? I don't, she was supposed to come, I don't know where she at, but, yo, that's cap though, I think it's cap, because, like, they, they need to stop, leave Will alone. He smacked Chris Rock, okay, yeah, get over it, but don't try to do that to him, y'all, Will is, is one of our childhood heroes.
That's what I'm saying, like, I don't even feel right.
Childhood hero.
I don't even feel right talking about Will in this capacity, like, I, I, he was such a big part, like, we all went home and watched Fresh Prince when we were like.
Yo, when, 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 when Will said that to Uncle Phil about his dad, I cried.
Me too, that episode.
Can we, can we, I wish we could pull a clip up of that, but I don't wanna play no audio, cause you know how Facebook is, they'd be like, you playing audio, uh, we taking it down.
That episode was so good.
That was, yeah, that was.
And it will bring us to tears.
So, yo, listen, that stuff is fake about Will Smith, man, stop believing it, and, and this is why.
Someone mentioned they think Tasha K is gonna get shut down, um, I don't know, maybe, maybe that will happen, cause YouTube can eliminate a channel, and she's on YouTube.
He said, Taz said, Will, he said, Will Smith is your childhood hero, we had Tupac, come on, don't do that, man, don't do that, man.
Well, Will, Will ended up with Tupac's women, so.
That's, that's a fact, look, so who won, Taz? Who won? Will Smith. Nice guy finished lives, exactly, don't forget to send them stars, man, if this, I don't know if this upside down or not, they're going right there, send them stars. First person to send them stars, man, I'm pulling up to you, or you could pull up to us tonight, and come get this t-shirt, man, that's what you could do, you could pull up to us tonight, we'll give you the location, we never tell our location and I like that, but, you can pull up to us tonight. But, yeah, I'm, I, I don't, yo, just stop, stop talking about Will, bad, please.
It's true.
It's not true at all.
Man definitely looked like, I'm telling you, he, he was in love with Will, that's the story.
He was like, yeah, cause he was, he was murdering it, he was murdering, I walked in and Dwayne was murdering.
He sound like, he sound like he was a fruity one.
He didn't laugh, nothing, he didn't laugh for nothing, at all, he was like, he was murdering.
Shay Shay wrote, uh, Ann said Shay Shay wrote you, she said you never even told her where to go, or what time, but the food is ready.
Oh my god.
I saved my appetite.
Wait. Somebody sent fifty stars, thank you for the fifty stars, hold on, I never sent, I could've sworn.
I am so aggravated, let me tell you why, cause now I'm hangry, cause I saved my appetite to eat her food.
Yo, thank you, Glendale.
And this man didn't even give her the address. I've been asking him all day, are you sure she's coming? Are you sure she's coming?
Yo.
Trying to keep our food for us, so.
I was actually trying to have her just deliver it to me.
Yeah, I bet. I bet, I'm so upset, y'all don't understand.
He about to eat our food, y'all.
Thank you cheeks, Lindsey, thanks to you, Glendale, for the, for the stars.
Appreciate you.
I'm aggravated, what's the next topic?
Oh my god, I, I definitely didn't, I apologize, yo, wow. Wow, I didn't send her the address and I sent it to everybody else, oh my god, yo. I sent you the address now, though, you could pull up on this though, man, thank you for whoever sent stars this now, but the, the next, um, what, what'd he say?
Well, the next other person who was in the news was, um, Ki- Kiki Palmer.
Oh, Kiki Palmer.
Yeah, y'all, did y'all see that? Thank you Liz, for the, for the stars, thank you Shakisha.
Thank you, thank you Shakisha.
Um, thank you Alicia, wow, y'all just on a stars frenzy.
Yes, thank you, thank you so much, yo, listen.
So Kiki Palmer, um, Taisha Wright, yeah, girl, like, let's talk about this, because, did you see, alright, did y'all see everything?
I seen everything.
What did you see? Y'all saw, okay, so allegedly, while Kiki Palmer got a restraining order against her baby father, uh, they just had a baby like, well, not even a year ago.
Not a year ago, yeah.
And she, uh, got a restraining order against him, says that she, he, she's been being abused for years, she sent, like, there's like screenshots that got leaked of like the cameras in, in her house.
Wait, so he was, he was hitting her?
Yeah. Well, so.
Is there a video?
There's video, but she, we only see screenshots.
Hmm.
And, but today, I don't know if y'all saw, or last night, rather, audio of the mom, like cussing Zerius out.
Yeah.
Did y'all hear that?
I seen that, I seen that, but I don't, I, I mean, it's, it's, you know, I'm not, yo, listen, I'm against any men hitting women, any men, but when, when you go out in public and you act like that with Usher, like, you know, I, man, listen, and you my shorty, like, you know, I don't even wanna say it, you gotta.
Cause I know, I know your shorty ain't, ain't, ain't scared of you, the way she pulled up and not you upside down.
Come on, don't do that, don't do that, don't do that.
Um, no, 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 but the mom also said in the, in the, in the recording, like, why you mad, Usher's gay, did y'all hear that?
What?
I don't even hear that.
He's not.
He, she was like, Ush- Usher's a whole gay man, like.
You never trust a mom.
I agree, I'm sorry, I agree.
Never.
I agree, I'm sorry, after, after the new, like, audio that was leaked, I'm sorry, but there's something not right about this situation, because during the whole phone, during the whole recording, you never hear them talk about him beating on, on, um, Kiki.
At all.
Like, at all, she, she talks about everything else, she even says, I hit you, she's like, oh, I'm not right for hitting you, but you did what you did and you made me mad. Like, so I don't know, and the mom just seems like, it seems like it's like a three, like, it's like a po- it's a po- it's a polly.
It's a Polly, I agree. Damn, oh Craig, thank you for the stars, damn, Craig sent us five hundred, thank you Lost in the Sauce, man, we seen you sent the stars twice, but that's definitely a Polly.
It's giving a po- her mother is like way too involved.
People, people who, who have their mom involved in their relationships never lies.
I agree.
Never lies, if your mom is involved, I might as well be hitting your moms, or something like, feel me? Real shit, right, you know? Like, you, you in, you in the business, like, I might as well be hitting moms.
And on top of that, the, and on top of that, so allegedly, he's been hitting her for like two years, abusing her for two years, but they have done like a podcast together.
And said that?
The mom, no, like, they do like a podcast together, the mom, Kiki, and the man, they, and like, people are like, how you sitting next to the man who's allegedly abusing your, um, you know?
Why you doing this, it's a thumbs down.
I know, I'm sorry. Um, I don't know, y'all, it's just, it's too much now, at first, I jumped to conclusions off the, the strength of the screenshot.
Yup.
I keep putting the thumbs down, but.
Keep doing the thumbs down.
But, um, but now, it's just too much, it's too muddy.
I think, me, honestly, the mom is always gonna side with the, the, the ki- the guy, she's gonna go with her daughter no matter what, no matter what, she's gonna go with her. And now they're gonna, they're gonna try to portray him to be this person, because he, he spoke up and said, oh, you shouldn't be doing that, disrespectful, whatever, uh, was you against that, or?
Against what?
When Kiki Palmer did that with Usher?
No, because this, y'all don't hear that, I'm the only person who hear that, I wasn't against it, because to me, it is, it is.
Yo, man, she is, she's high, bruh.
It is promotion, it might. Y'all didn't hear that, like, something, I hear, I heard, well, whatever, anyways.
What you heard, hell, tell us, what you heard?
Just like a sound, like a knocking sound.
What?
Okay, whatever, anyways.
Did y'all hear any noises? No noise, yo.
Anyways, y'all, what was I gonna say?
Thank you, Jalee.
What was I gonna say? What we talking about?
We thinking, we talking about Kiki, yo, you hearing noises, you alright? Let me check it through, yeah, bruh.
I know, I didn't feel, y'all, I was not gonna come to it, cause I didn't feel good, so I'm literally just waking up.
Ah, you gotta post, like, you good, nah, you hearing noises and stuff, she deaf, y'all, I don't know what's up with her, man.
I do not, I don't smoke or nothing, my neighbor smoked, so maybe I caught conflict.
Nah, hold on, Earl, what's in that candy? Let me see, we not promoting, we not promoting none, bruh, it must be, this must be the weed candy, you must got this from Ray Peso or something.
But listen, so.
Oh my bad, Earl.
I just feel like.
He bugging.
I just feel like I was okay with the mom butting in, like, trying to defend Kiki, but at this point, it really just seems like she's overbearing.
She over, yeah.
And like, Kiki allows her to be.
She allow everybody, she would allow social media to tear him down without saying anything, right?
Well, they was tearing him down in the phone call, they was like, ooh, they, I think the, the mother even told him that he got a limp dick.
She said that?
Yes.
I mean, but women like that, right?
What?
You don't like the lumps?
No, we don't like no limp.
Wait, so you don't like the uppercut?
A limp?
Like, what's a limp?
A limp is like, you can't get it up.
Oh, a limp, oh, I thought, me, I'm thinking it's the uppercut, I'm thinking like the upper is bent a little and stuff like that, I didn't, I didn't know, I didn't, my bad, I'm, I'm still hurting. I didn't go to sex ed, I did not go to sex ed, yo, but I, I didn't know, my bad. Yo, my bad, I didn't know, y'all, I didn't know, but yeah, somebody see, does, the curve and the limp different, Lou?
Yeah, he think I'm talking about a curve, we do like the curve.
The uppercut, I thought she was talking about the uppercut, like a limp, me, I'm thinking a limp is like that, not to talk about it, no, pause, for, um, take the mic from Lou. Yo, yo, I'm not messing with y'all, man, I'm not messing with y'all, but yeah, I think she, I honestly think she's, she's too involved, man, she, she gotta stop. She gotta mind her business, they never gonna be, um, happy, now that she gotta restrain the order on him, that's even worse.
And here's the thing, I guarantee they're gonna be back together.
You think so?
I think so.
Always, right?
And then, and then she's gonna tell us to mind our business, I guarantee why.
And then she gonna be at another concert, and doing another concert, doing her thing again and stuff like that.
And now, but I wanna make it clear, if they're, like, if this is a domestic violence situation, I take that very seriously, I think it's disgusting.
Yes.
Um, so if that is the case, and we will see.
Yes, we do not, yo, listen, we do not approve of any women or kids getting hit from a man at all, or even, even hitting on a man, whatever, that's, you know, that's nonviolent or not about that. Yeah, well, yeah, ladies don't hit men neither, like, you know.
That anymore.
No more? That's crazy, that's crazy, you wanna get to the next, they said, somebody said they def still having sex, whatever, the only way they not is the mom with, in her house with her, or something like that, which is true.
The mom probably be there.
You think so?
Man, listen.
She might be listening to the whole thing.
I don't know, I don't like nobody who's like, always want their mother in our relationship, I don't like that.
What's the next topic, let's get to the next, submissive woman, we can talk, we can talk about it, we can talk about it.
They wanna talk about this so badly.
We can talk about it, it's too many here now, we can talk about it, submissive woman, women don't know how to be submissive no more, at all.
Lou made a post, you guys, saying, a lot of women are single because they don't know how to be submissive.
Facts, right, Earl?
This is true.
It's a fact.
This is true.
It's a fact, that's a fact, and, and a lot of people, a lot, if you single right now, comment you single, if you single right now, comment you single, I bet, it's a lot of women out here that's single.
I don't know why the comments ain't coming up for me now.
It ain't, you wanna take this home? Cause they, they.
Oh, no, here, sorry, okay, your, your, Jadi, oh, I didn't even realize that was you, Jadi said, only submissive to a man who is also be, going to be submissive.
I agree.
Okay, okay.
I agree with her, yeah, she gotta, I like that, I like that, I like that a lot, because, yeah, nah, nah, yeah, that's a good answer right there, look, Bella N, single, single, look at that, look. Can't keep a man, none of that, because y'all know how to be submissive.
Why can't y'all keep us, though, like, I don't understand, talk about, we can't keep a man.
Wait, we could, but we can't, we don't wanna keep y'all no more, because y'all are hawksters.
And we don't want, we don't want to keep y'all, and, like, why, why don't y'all understand, why don't men understand that the same issues y'all have, y'all have so many issues with us, right?
What issues? Name, name them.
Right now, that you guys are saying we're not gonna be submissive, that's fine, no, I'm saying, I'm saying, have your issue, have your issue, I'm not gonna be submissive, okay? I don't want, like, if I don't want to be, what is the issue? If I wanna be single, what is the issue? Go find you a woman who does wanna be submissive.
Yeah, but if.
Like, what is, I feel like y'all complain, there's so many women out here, there's like, what, on the east coast, there's like fifteen women to each man, so, yeah, yeah, so if I don't wanna be submissive, you have fourteen other bitches to choose from, why is you so worried about me? Like, why are you so worried about me?
Yeah, but, no, but if we, if, if a man is coming to you, right, and y'all talking, whatever and stuff, and you always, you, you just always got your guard up, and you just like, you know, and he treating you right, he treating you right, he doing all of that.
She does not want you, and she, it, she has every right to not want you.
So why give him that time, why go on a date, why, why, why let him smash and all that then?
I, I'm not talking about those women, I can only speak for me.
Yeah, but, so you mean to tell me you ain't never be submissive to a man?
That I'll never be submissive to him?
No, I mean, have, have you ever been?
Oh, yeah, I mean, I, I would be willing to, yeah.
So now, I seen you comment, I seen you comment, and I forgot what your comment said, I forgot, you said something about.
What exactly are we being submissive to, which is a valid question, because just like you guys are asking us why we aren't doing certain things, why aren't you guys doing cer- certain things?
But we are, like, what, what aren't we doing? Men, men, men are, men are, we can talk about it, men, men is doing, men.
That's not like you wanna bring up some statistics, honey, because you can bring up some statistics, let's, 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 have you guys seen the chart data of women, um, to men income? Specifically, I'm not gonna even say women to men, I'm not gonna say women to men, let's talk about our.
You jumped the money?
Let's talk about our community, yes.
Yeah, we need another female.
Yes, we are jumping to that, and I'm gonna tell you why, we are jumping to that, because you guys always wanna compare us to women in the past, relationships have changed, relationships have, have evolved. With, a lot of women in the past, they had to be submissive for a lot of reasons, and one of the main reasons was income, the man was the breadwinner, so they had to submit to a man in order to even survive. Like, let's be real, that was a lot of women in the past, yeah.
Yeah, back then, but.
Things have changed.
I mean, yes, it is.
We have more options, we don't have to do that.
But y'all, yeah, and then y'all, after y'all working fifty, sixty hours a week, and then y'all like, oh, I need help, this and that, I wish somebody could help me, this and that, but you get a man to help you and stuff, and, and he actually being submissive, and he's being the leader, and then y'all just shut him down all the time, yes.
These men can't even help themselves.
Listen, a chick could be, listen, a woman could be getting everything taken care of, right, and she's still gonna step out of that in the game fucking, right?
Earl, Earl, who hurt you?
No.
Because that was way less than, we wasn't even talking about that.
Yo, send stars and support, man, send stars and support, please, send stars.
Let's talk about another statistic, right?
Go ahead, you bringing up statistics, whatever, I don't even wanna say it, statistics, I'm saying it with my tongue and my lip.
Listen, I like numbers.
So bring it up, bring it up right now.
I like numbers.
Hold on, Priscilla said, men make life harder, and that is the issue, how?
Y'all do, honestly, y'all do, honestly, because you know what? I've been, I stopped, damn, I can't even see all these comments.
Yo, take the comment, take the, take this home.
No, but see, let me reply to Barry's first, cause I saw Barry say something like, don't say these men, y'all keep saying women. Y'all don't spec- specify, so if y'all want us to specify, and you don't specify, you just saying women.
But we are specifying, because it's literally ninety-nine point nine percent of women.
And it's ninety-nine point nine percent of men. I'mma, I'mma come like that, I, I'mma come, I'mma say the same thing.
This life, she gonna be single, you see this attitude?
That's fine, that's fine, I'm happy.
Wait, hold on, hold on, hold on, hold on.
Why am I not happy?
Use toys?
Like, ones to the blue, yeah.
Exactly.
And guess what, them toys satisfy me more than, y'all probably could, so.
If you use toys.
Let's talk about this, though, in research, they did research on this, you guys, because I'm so sick and tired of you, are you happy, Earl?
I'm there, yeah.
And are you single?
Nope.
So, oh, you're not single, and you're, you're, you're not single either. They be fucking lying. I'm not even gonna go there, cause they be fucking lying, but we not gonna go there. We not gonna get into the conversation.
Yo, hold on, hold on, somebody said, men are just trying to be controlling, and do you take that as controlling?
About this, because no, I'm really, I'm really, like, it really gets annoying, if I'm not dating, you know how many options I have? Matter of fact, when we started the show, what, before we started the show, what you said?
What?
What you said to me?
What, the dudes love you?
Yeah, what you said, say what you said.
The dudes love you, the guys love you, which part?
Cause Earl over here talking about, I'm not happy, I have options, the options are there, I don't want them right now.
You do, you do have a lot of options, and you, you, you gotta, you probably got the perfect, you probably got the perfect guy right there, treating you good. Buying you stuff, bringing you coffee, flowers, whatever and stuff, right? And then you just like, eh, I'm good, that's not enough.
It's not even that, it's not even that, it's what you, it's what you just said, like, honestly, dating, especially dating in, in a, we live in a small state.
Yeah.
And even smaller cities, and it can, dating can turn into something much more than you even thought it would, because men do come with drama.
Um, Liz, Liz said, I repeat, I truly think, my opinion, there is a lot of women with masculine energy and less feminine energy.
I a hundred percent agree.
Yo, they watching Avengers, that's what they doing. Everybody, like even Eka, watch Avengers, turning the horn.
I don't watch Avengers.
And being controlled, being controlled of everything, and anytime a man be like.
But I'm single, like, if I don't wanna be with you, here's my question.
You like smashing dogs or keep them around?
No, if I don't wanna be, if I don't wanna be with you, right? Why should it matter to you that I'm masculine? Why should it matter to you that I don't wanna be submissive? If these things are true, why should it matter to you if I don't wanna be with you?
Because if, if we, I, so we.
It's like, y'all, y'all wanna be like, it's like, y'all want female, every woman in the world to like, be submissive to you, like, why?
Thank you, somebody said, the women think they're pie pie, that's, that's a fact, they think spinach, and the women, I see, the ladies is going crazy in the comments right now. We, yo, actually, you wanna open the line for this?
She says she forty-five and the dating scene is crazy, Liz said this.
She said what?
I just think. It's just like, you know, like, y'all dudes out there, I don't care what y'all got going on, I don't care if you have a job, I don't care if you're single, I don't care if, um, if you're. If you can lead or you can't, why don't I care? Because I don't want you, like, I'm simply not dating, I'm not open to dating, like, I feel like that you should only care about the person that's in front of your face.
Um, Yar- Yaris Marie Feliciano, she said, there's options out here. I got married men in my inbox, so it's harder for us to trust when you have taken a married, a married guy sending you messages and wanting to meet up. But you can't put that on all men, though, man. I'm moving, I'm moving, yes.
And let's talk about, no, let's talk about this study that was done last year, actually, so, they did a study on happiness. Sixty-one percent of single women said they were happy with their relationship status, compared to forty-nine percent of single men. That means more men want to be in relationships than women. A further seventy-five percent of single women were not looking for a partner, compared to sixty-five percent of single men. So more men want to be in relationships than women, and so I continue to like, with this narrative, that sing- that single women are unhappy.
That.
When more single men want relationships.
I agree, though, be, we tired of beating off.
It's obvious, it's obvious.
Tired of beating off.
We know.
We're tired of beating off.
We know, we can see it on the Facebook, with y'all bashing us every day, we can see it.
Po- Po said, Po said, uh, women are gonna be old, um, gonna be an old single lady with ten cats.
And if she is, and if she is, that's the point, if she is, what does that matter to you? Cause you gonna be still single too, beating your meat.
Damn.
So like, what does that matter to you? She gonna be with her cats happy, like, I don't understand where that is to you.
Don't forget to share this, man.
Why does that matter to you?
Yo, oh my god, yo, but.
It's like, y'all want, y'all want women to be single and lonely so bad, cause y'all want them to be depressed and sad.
That's not true, that's not true.
You go and left, we don't want y'all to be lonely, at all, we want y'all to be happy.
And if we, and we always tell you, we already got it right now. Thank God, because.
Yeah, cause she was going in right now.
And let me tell you another motherfucking thing, okay, cause all y'all be in relationships, and then y'all break up, and y'all be on Facebook, like, I was paid all the fucking rent. I was getting abused, I was getting cheated on, so y'all be in relationships playing happy, and then when y'all break up, y'all want us to feel bad for you.
Yo, hold on.
Don't come with that.
Nah, hold on, I wanna call, I wanna call somebody very special, real quick.
Y'all be like, oh, his, his, his drawers dirty, posting pictures of his drawers and stuff like that, come on now.
She been washing up for me.
I'ma call somebody very special.
All y'all hate y'all baby mamas and y'all baby daddies?
Yeah, I'm calling somebody.
But we, but we depressed and sad, no, y'all is depressed and sad, y'all got babies with people y'all fucking like. Okay?
Yo, hold on, hold on, y'all. She going crazy right now, man.
Don't motherfucking tell me I ain't happy, bitch.
Yo, yo, can you hear, can you hear us? Hold on, hold on, hold on, I'm trying to, I'm trying to, I'm, I'm trying to plug you in, yeah, cause you the main person I wanna hear, I wa- I wanna hear defend us because, yeah, I wanna hear, I wanna hear you defend it.
No, but you gotta be quick, cause our first guest is here, and we have a limited time.
Oh, yes, I don't have time, I like to work it. Can you hear us now? Nah, it ain't, that shit ain't working, man. Yeah, nah, that shit ain't working.
Rob Maine, you don't even know me, like, I hate that, no, I hate that, so like, y'all, y'all do not know me, like, to, to say this type of things that you say, you go off of what you, what you saw on my Facebook. And a lot of y'all gotta stop doing that, too, y'all as men do that a lot, and that, that can turn us off, like, from junk.
So y'all get turned off easy from when a man is, uh, on, on Facebook posts, like, bashing women, I mean, not really bashing, but like.
No, like, y'all just judging us based off of Facebook, or based off of a few pictures and a few posts that you see, you don't know, you don't know me, you don't know people.
No, that's true, I don't, like, you know, like, I, but listen, man, I'm judging a woman if she got her ass out.
Yeah, that's fine, if that's not the type, but that, then that's not the type of woman that you want, so move on and find the one that you do want.
Okay, okay.
Like, what the fuck?
Okay, okay, I understand, we got our.
We got our first guest.
Ay, y'all, hold on, y'all going crazy for her, man, huh?
They gonna get the fire stick, man.
They got you hot.
Cause they knew what they was doing. We got our first guest here, so y'all could hold all these men and women comments for Lou's next post.
We did a great job.
Why don't you go ahead, um, Rino, for the people who don't know you.
You can move in the middle a little, man.
Oh, god, nah, they can see me, I'm going.
Oh, yeah, 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 yeah. Got no hair rest, so we got.
They got hair rest down, listen. Uh, Ron Huggins, uh, also known as Huggy Bear.
Huggy Bear?
Yes, sir.
Where you from?
New Haven, Connecticut.
Nice.
I don't know, we had New Haven in the, in the car last week.
Phil Blunt, you know Phil Blunt?
Of course.
Phil Blunt?
Of course.
Listen to his music?
Yes, sir.
It's my guy, man, Phil Blunt, man, shout to Phil Blunt, man, shout to Phil Blunt, what, um, what are you doing in New Haven?
Ah, god, what do I do? So, uh, I work, I work for the city, uh, my official title, I'm one of them, Deputy Director Youth and Administration, uh, that's my official title with the city. And, I mean, just on the side, I am a, what is it, community activist, I like to do, uh, 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 motivational person. Just, yeah, a little bit of everything, man.
Yeah, that's what they're saying in the comments, he does everything.
Yo, what's your title, Mr. Everything? Jesus Junior, now.
So how long have you been doing all these things?
Uh, I started doing a lot of, um, work when I was thirteen, fourteen years old.
Oh.
Yeah.
That's what's up, so thirteen, fourteen, and not sincere, Mr. Everything, what's like, uh, the best thing? That's your job, like, why you keep working, and why you still there?
Um, for me, I think the most rewarding thing is giving students and families, um, opportunities that I wish I had as a kid.
Yeah.
Um, growing up, uh, um, you know, inner city, New Haven, uh, where poverty was on the rise, and there was a lot of influence, negative influence. That, uh, could have potentially, uh, caused me to go one direction, I think what I wanted to do was, uh, uh, allow kids to see and know, like, hey, you too can be. From the city, born and raised in the city, um, and don't have to necessarily be defined by where you've come from, a lot of experiences that you've had. Um, by the losses that you might have, might have taken in life, I wanted people to know, like, hey, you know, just cause you're from an inner city area, you too can defy the odds, um. One of my favorite lines is, behind every stat is a story. Um, it's so easy to look at statistics and see how many people, um, were shot, how many people were victims of homicide, or victims of gun violence. Or how many people are living in poverty, but you have to get to the new place to understand, behind that stat, there is a story, what's the story behind it? So for me, I, I aim to, in a lot of things that I do, uh, meet people where they are.
Yeah.
Find out what the story is, and really try to use that, um, as an opportunity to engage them and redirect, uh, potential niggas be.
That's big, man.
I love that.
Yeah, that's, that's big, yeah, you got, you got a, um, you got a list?
Yeah, why, what's wrong with that?
Man, now we gang, man. Ah, shit, my head, boy, let's gang, man, I knew it when I heard you say, statistics?
Listen, the list come in handy.
Oh, no.
When appropriate.
No, let's gang, man.
Put the tongue emoji in the comment, hashtag big tongue list gang.
Oh, my god.
You gotta hit him, you gotta hit him one time, Huggy. Let's gang, you gotta hit him with the tongue, ah.
I love it, man, we gonna have a good time, let's talk, man.
See that, yeah, I mean, we gonna change the subject, but yo, list gang, list, li- is it list or list?
Oh, I'm done, baby.
Yo. But yeah, so, how many kids do you think you saved, or, or at least got a chance to save from you working for the city throughout your years?
No, no, I'll be completely honest with you, I don't personally, excuse me, I don't personally take no credit for anything that, um, I've been able to do, I'm a big believer. So anybody who knows me, I'm a big believer in faith, I believe in God, um, I believe that God is the source.
Yeah.
He had just allowed me to be a resource, a reproduction of the things that, um, he essentially provides, so, when you look at, like, how many kids have I been able to save, or been able to help? Honestly, it's countless, right?
Yeah.
I believe that your life should be one that speaks for itself.
Yes.
And sometime, I've had people come up to me and say, yo, you've saved my kid, or you, something you've posted has encouraged me or met me right where you were, so I can't give a count. But the one thing I can say is, if my life, if me living, um, I've been very transparent about things I've experienced, right?
Yeah.
Uh, from the loss of my mom, loss of my dad, um, loss of my grandparents, just major losses, loss of my best friends. Um, and so I've been very transparent about the things that I've gone through, and the reason I've been so transparent is because if something that I've, that I've experienced. Helps somebody else to make it through what they're going through, then I believe that you've touched that person's life. So you, so we don't even realize, we touch so many people's life without necessarily touching it.
Touching it, that's a fact.
Um, so I'm encouraged every day, when I hear the people that write me and say, hey, you know, something you posted really motivated me, I needed to hear that, I was going through a bad day. So when I wake up and I'm screaming, today's a great day to have a great day on purpose, but that was birthed out of me waking up not feeling like, there was a reason to have a great day on purpose.
Yeah.
You get what I'm saying? And so when you've gone through trauma, when you've gone through losses, when you've gone through experiences, where you feel like there's no hope, and God finally snatches you out. And reminds you, crisis in the crisis, when he reminds you, I built you with a storm in life. When he reminds you, I built you with a storm in mind, those are the things that make you say, wow, God, if going through that was gonna bless me like this, then it was all worth it. And so for me, to be able to bless somebody with a motivational word, to be able to bless somebody with like, yo, how's this guy hosting concerts and doing all this? I'm a guy from New Haven, grew up inner city, New Haven, just like y'all, and if I could do it, a person that hated school. Um, a person who I'll never forget, my third grade teacher told me, you gonna be just like your dad.
Mm-hmm.
You know what I'm saying? So, I, if I can outlive and outshadow those negative things, you too can do it, so.
What, what, if you don't mind me asking, what age did you lose your parents?
Um, so when my dad passed away, um, I was twelve years old, and when my mom passed away, I was twenty-five.
Damn. Damn, you still was young, man.
So did your father, like, did losing your father so young, is one, is that one of the reasons why you, like, feel, feel the need to, to be there for these children?
Oh, without a doubt, I mean, you know, it, it, it's kinda funny, um, it wasn't until I was, um, just graduated college, and a lot of people don't know this, but. I did my bachelor's in three years and my master's in one, so it took me four years to get two degrees, but it wasn't until I graduated college that I first learned how to even tie a tie. You know what I'm saying?
You didn't know how to tie a tie?
I didn't even know how to tie a tie.
I still don't know how to tie a tie.
But, to that, to that point, you know, I've learned, it's okay to ask for help. It's okay to like, you know, like, hey, listen, I don't know this, and so to your, to your question, yes, me, um, having lost my dad, for, for a lot of, for a lot of years. I didn't wanna ask for help, uh, you know, I was one, I figured it out, and honestly, it was just one day where I was like, I need to tie this tie, and I really don't know what to do.
Yeah.
And I'll never forget, I shot him off, Kermit Carolina actually pulled me to the side, and showed me step by step how to tie a tie. And so for that, I feel like somebody poured into my life, somebody, you know, was there for me.
Yeah.
I owe it to somebody else, and, you know what I'm saying? And when you, here's how I look at it, when you survive the storm, God gives you an anointing to bring other people through a very similar storm.
That's big, man.
Yeah, man, I'm sorry.
I know y'all want, you know, I know. Nah, 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 we want that, yo, yo, you, you got me up here about to cry, right?
I know, I'm about to say you a preacher.
But I'm a realist, though, hold on, watch this, y- y- you know, I think, I, I, I'm a person who's like, yo, if I show my battle wounds, yeah, please share, if I show my battle wounds to somebody. And I'm very vulnerable, very transparent about my experiences, that allows another person to know, yo, the only way a wound can heal is if you pull off the, pull off the bandage.
Yeah.
Pu- pull off the wrapping, right? And we as a community, we're told to cover it up.
Cover it up.
Say nothing about it, don't deal with it, and what I've learned, one of the best things I've ever learned. You gotta deal with it, or it will deal with you.
Hmm.
And so for me, I say it's okay to get in therapy, it's okay to have a circle of friends and say, yo, I'm having a bad day.
Yeah.
I, to- today's not my day, I really need, I need help, I need strength, I need guidance, watch this, having people who hold you accountable. A dream without the right team is a nightmare, so even when you look at the concerts, and you look at all the things I do, people see me, well, I'll be remiss not to honor and, and give a shout out. To the people who are around me, who checking on me and actually pouring to me.
Mm-hmm.
You know what I'm saying? And I can be very honest with y'all, a lot of people are around when you're going through something, right? When you're, you know, when it's a funeral, when it's the loss, I'm around, I'm around, I'm around.
Facts.
But when push comes to shove, five years later, six years later now, for my mom, I could count how many people are actually consistent. How many people are in the moment, versus how many people are actually consistent. So what I tell people is, a lot of people see the performance.
Yeah.
Yes.
Right? A lot of people don't understand the pain, don't understand the pressure, don't understand the frustration, everybody sees the limelight, even with Chacha, right?
Yeah.
Everybody sees Park Car Cabo, they live, they getting started, but they don't realize the moments where y'all had only ten viewers.
Yeah.
So y'all was just being consistent, watch this. Consistency, content plus consistency brings currency.
Yeah.
A lot of people got, and, and you, that's the business model, when you got content, and you consistent about it, it's gonna generate currency, it's obligated to generate currency.
I agree, nah, you good. I don't know what that right here, I'm trying to do. Yo, whatever, this Park Car Cabo.
Yeah, I love it.
It's part, yo, well, I got a, I got a serious question, though, what's, what's something that you going through that nobody knows?
Um, okay. You and, you and Dee.
I with Dee, that's Dee right there.
You brought us there.
That's Dee.
I, I'll be very honest, since it was publicized, um, a lot of people, I think the backend of the concert, right? A lot of people, I'm gonna just bring the concert, cause I know that.
What concert?
I'm talking about the Glorilla Show.
For those of you who don't know, he throws, this is the second one, right?
Thank you, Therese.
He does a co- oh, P M B Rock.
Oh, you was the one doing the, on the green and stuff?
Yeah, we, well, we worked together.
The team, like, y'all team. Okay, yep, yep, yep.
I did the Snapchat filter for B and B. I didn't even know that was here. But so, um, he does a concert annually for, it's like for the kids, right, for like a back to school thing?
For families. The, the, the mission and goal is to serve his kids and teenagers, but it's for the families. The idea is for parents to go out with their kids and, and, and bridge that gap. So parents understand their music and vice versa.
So this year's, uh, biggest, you guys have like a, a big act each year, and this year's act was Glorilla. And, uh, a lot of parents were unhappy with the choice of Glorilla being the headliner for the concert. So that's what you were about to say, you, that, that's what you're dealing with?
Yeah, so let's talk about it. Um, one of the, one of the biggest things that I, that I would address is that a lot of people, again, seen the show. A lot of people had a comment as it relates to the show. But a lot of people don't know, there's a lot of things that happen behind the scenes, dealing with insurance, right? Dealing with, um, entities that feel like our kids, black and brown kids can't come downtown, can't behave themselves, can't act, right? And so when you deal with all of that pressure from above, when you deal with all of the people who are looking and have this expectation that it is going to fail, that is one of the biggest challenges, because on the outside, everybody sees the finished product. Nobody sees seven thirty in the morning, you gotta be there, you gotta help set up, you gotta load in, you gotta make sure guests are okay. You have so many different layers to pulling that show together. The show that's only four hours, but it took four months to get to that point. Going back and forth with contracts, it ain't like just a normal promoter, right? Then you have people who are, oh, I should be on the stage. Why you ain't got me? Why you ain't got that? It's like, dude, just cause you, there's a difference between, watch this, between a hobby and a business. A lot of people do things as hobbies, but they don't understand, to be on that stage, there's insurance requirements that come. You have to have your LOC, your proper assurance. Uh, indemnification clauses, things that people don't get, cause they only see the show. So I think one of the biggest things I would say I'm personally dealing with is, and, and Stephanie Sutton, she, she said it, how do you feel when this person who has no kids does so much to try to give other kids an experience? I ain't got no kids on my own side. Technically, I ain't gotta do this. But I do it to try to give people an experience that I wish I had. I got tired of going to shows and seeing in the front, kids that didn't look like us. That was frustrating. I said, nah, our kids should have to worry about a three hundred plus price tag for a ticket. Nah, I want our kids to see today's biggest artist without the worry of expenses.
That's another thing. So the tickets were like fourteen dollars.
Yeah, let me be clear. The fourteen dollar ticket doesn't even, isn't even a penny and a dollar worth the show. The ticket price was only to be given as a donation to pour back into other nonprofits. Who are out here doing good work, who we highlight, who we wanted to guide these expenses, right? So you look at it, I look at it like, hey, the poll was done to the kids, who do y'all wanna see? To be honest with you, glow was the lesson to evils, in my opinion, right?
Wait, so who was the other?
I mean, some TikTok people who talk about numbers, shoot them up, kill them, drop a Uzi on his mouth.
These were options that were brought to the table?
Yeah, that allow the kids to choose.
Oh, you allow the kids to pick?
I, I, I go, I do polls. Kids, who do y'all wanna see?
Who do y'all wanna see?
Me what y'all want.
Oh, yeah.
My job is to, again, I wanna give y'all what y'all want. Cause if, if it was up to me, and I had to choose, I would be honest with you, y'all gonna be listening to Kirk Franklin, Todd Delaney, you, you, uh, Travis Green.
And you know what's crazy, you know what's crazy, yo? A lot of people don't know that. They don't know that. They think that you picked the artist and, and parents is like, oh, he, he wanted to see the artist and this and that, like.
Not at all.
The kids picked it.
And to be honest with you, it took me two or three weeks to learn the whole album. And I love her, but it took me time to really learn. I didn't know, but if it's who the kids want, my job is to try to bridge that gap, get the kids who they want. So not only did, watch this, I'm, you know, I'm sorry. I'm like an overweight basketball player, but, point I'm making is, so, parents, you had a chance to review the music, review the art, and you went on, you went online, logged on the website, selected the tickets, purchased the tickets, got the tickets emailed to you, downloaded the app, got an outfit, and still had to do all of these things to get from buying a ticket to the show. But here's what I learned, and I wanna shout out everybody else who's been supporting this, right? Success brings support. So to all of the people, you know, to the one or two people who have something negative to say, let's just say the positivity outshattered all of that. You had over twenty-five hundred kids downtown. Not one person shot, not one person in a fight, not one person in anything major or negative, as the naysayer said. And so for me, during that time, I said, God, you gotta, you gotta encourage me, because if not, this is easy to get discouraged. And he told me clear as day, I'm gonna use this to prove the doubters wrong. And for me, that's what it is.
So I, like, I'm, I'm from Bridgeport, so I don't have that many New Haven people on my timeline, but when the concert happened, I mean, after the concert happened, like, that, that was the talk on Facebook, I guess, that day. Um, and I feel like a lot of the, the people who are commenting, because you mentioned, you know, these parents went and purchased tickets, which is true. But I felt like a lot of the people who were talking about it and who had negative things to say, they didn't actually go to the concert. So they didn't purchase tickets, but they just, the reason they didn't go is, was because they felt Glorilla wasn't appropriate for children of all ages. Um, so what do you say to those people who feel like, if you are gonna be doing these types of shows, maybe you should get someone who is age appropriate for all? Or some people say, maybe he should limit it to just high school students?
So, so for me, I believe as a parent, it isn't my, it isn't my job to police and parent your household. You know, as a parent, charity begins at home, right? You know, as a parent, whether or not this is something you want your child to go to. I'll say to those same parents, right, and this is no shade, one thing I can say about my mom, at, at eight years old, my mom allowed me to play Grand Theft Auto, right? That's a very apt answer, and I was eighteen plus, but my mom knew I had the mental capacity and maturity to handle it, right? As parents, parents who are truly involved in your child's life, you know what your child can truly handle. You know that. You're the parent. If you're in a, if you're in a vial period, going to period teacher conferences, engaged, uh, doing homework, dinnertime at the table, things like that, you know the capacity of your child. So what I would say to those parents, or to people who say something like that, every April, we do a gospel show, every Good Friday. You have an opportunity to come near.
Do a lot of people show up?
Oh, my gospel show starts out every year.
Every year, okay.
The point I'm making is, though, the same period, you have that ability, right? Taking a step further. Not only do I do those things, we do, you can't, you can't take away the community events, right? My job is to try to meet people right where they are. So we do pop-up shops in the community all throughout the summertime. Every Wednesday, family fun day, everything's free. Different strokes for different folks. So you may not think that that music right there was for you, and that's cool. But what I would say is, you have to also be willing to engage in other things that are going on, right? And the best way to, to impact change, it should be a part of it. So I, I look at it like this, your voice is your, is your vote. Do these people come out and vote? Do these people come to board meetings? Do these people come to open, open conversations that we have? No, what they do is they sit behind a keyboard, they sit behind letters, right? Let's talk about it. Hey, you know what? Let's have a mature adult conversation. Texting has no tone. So if you're writing something, a person is inclined to assume or believe, or internalize it how they feel. You can, you can have an adult conversation. Hey, listen, I really would love to see such and such and such. But if you don't do nothing but complain, rather than being a part of the process, then you're just as bad.
You're just as bad. I agree. Then you had a time?
No, 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 my timer was, I didn't wanna go over y'all.
Yeah, but I, I do wanna get to some of the concerns that people had about the show. I wish we had more time, but, um, so people were also stating that there was some type of twerking competition amongst the children on stage.
It wasn't amongst the children, so let me clear the air. Um, Glorilla actually checked everybody, see, see people talk, right? Instead of, instead of knowing facts. She actually checked everybody's age to make sure that first of all, people were of age, number one. Um, and number two, um, let's be real, right? You see just as much of that on, not to justify it, but on TikTok, on a, on a, on a regular social media feed. I mean, you see that on your kids' face, if you're really a part of it, right? If you, if you really in your kids', like, let's, let's be very transparent. Some of these people are engaging in some very risky, negative behavior overall. My thing is, I'd rather be a part of it to an extent and say, hey, this is what it is, this is, not to justify it, but I'm the type of person, at, at ten years old, me and my mom was talking about sex, right? There was no conversation that, that we didn't have. And so what I would say is, I think anything that happens or anything that occurs, as a parent, it is your job to make it a learning opportunity. How you gearing, how you shifting, right? And so for me, I would say, you know what, people go, no matter what you do, you gonna always have somebody that has something to say. In my mind, the greatest man to walk the face of this earth, in my mind, Jesus. People had something negative to say. When it comes to events, when it comes to park car conversation, if you don't got people having nothing negative to say, then what are you really doing, right? Haters, having hate towards everybody. That's what they do. You get what I'm saying? Haters will hate no matter what, but you gotta use your haters as your motivation. You gotta use those people who are, oh, she got the food from your apartment.
Oh, yeah, we actually, and that's Craig, too. So when we got, yo, listen, Huggy, we appreciate you.
I'm gonna follow it up if y'all ever want to. Like, we could definitely.
We with it.
Why don't you let them know where to find you at?
Where to find you at, yeah.
So Instagram, R S H J two or three, Facebook, Ronald Huggins is my personal page, however, I can't add any more friends. So you can follow Huggy Bear Entertainment, DM me, let's have a conversation. Yo, I gotta shout out Park Car Conversation. I was like, yo, they got me in a little car, we got an issue. What's that? They don't took the hair rest on. You three, keep doing what you're doing. Don't let nothing or nobody stop you. Again, like I was saying, haters will be haters, people will always have something to say. But as long as you guys stay focused, can't nobody stop you, all right?
Appreciate it, man. Yo, thank you so much. List games. Yo, Vic, thank you for the stars. Vic, thank you for the stars. I'm gonna hop out for her, cause I owe her this.
I'm so excited. Oh, you don't want to? She wants it in the back, she wants it in the back.
We got, yeah, we gonna let her hop in.
Oh, my God, you brought everything, girl. Oh, you a mother. She said, fuck.
Uh-oh, what you got?
Oh, my God, so y'all, we got, what is the name of your business? Tell them.
Um, it's called Magic Taste by Shay.
Magic Taste by Shay, and I swear, if you haven't heard of her food, I've heard so many amazing things, oh my God, from everybody, literally. Um, and, hey, where the ho- oh, lose that. Anyways, you guys. I know, I told them that you wanna buy. Tashaya, um, Tashaya is a cook in, uh, a chef in Bridgeport, right? And you cook all types of food, so it's, uh, mostly soul food and Spanish food, right?
Correct.
Yeah, and she, is she, is it every day?
No, it's usually on the weekends, but soon I'll be cooking every day for all of you guys.
I, I'm so excited to try this food, you guys. So Lou forgot to send her our address. She was supposed to be here, be here earlier. He be pissing me off, but she came and dropped the food off anyway, so we're definitely gonna let you guys know how it tastes and.
Yo, hold up, don't eat my food. Don't eat my food.
Is it for anyone specific? Cause I don't wanna mix it up.
Yeah, she, she know.
It's not specific, but Lou, he doesn't eat pork or beef, so I brought three of my favorite dishes that people always order for me. It's pork, one is fried chicken, and one is fried fish. And I brought my lemonades, one is strawberry, one is lemonade, regular flavor. And the other one is called Augie Blue, that I named after my son. His name is August. And I also brought cheesecake and cornbread. I hope you guys don't go to sleep after eating.
I'm on a diet, but I'm, I didn't, I didn't eat all day waiting for your food, so I'm very excited to taste it. And why don't you let them know where, where they can find you at?
Um, right now, I'm located in Bridgeport, but I, I cater outside of my house, but I'm transitioning into a restaurant right now.
Oh, congratulations. Yes, I love that. But how can they order now, like, on your Facebook page?
So right now, I'm not gonna be cooking probably till like next month, but you can hit me up and follow me on Facebook. My Facebook name is Tashaya Bowens, T A S H A Y A. Bowens, B O W E N S, and I usually always post my menus of when I'm cooking, so it usually be on like a Sunday. And you guys can just call me and order from there.
Thank you so much for dropping the food off. I was like harassing him. We're definitely gonna post it afterwards, and we'll let you know where to find her, too. Um, thank you for coming. And I'm sorry you had to sit in the front. Oh, my gosh, all the way in the back.
Hey, Craig, you, you can try it, Craig.
I'm here, I'm here.
We can try it.
Why don't you tell me what's what?
But this is cheesecake.
Oh, man, she got the cheesecake.
She got cheesecake?
Showing off over here. That's what you're supposed to do.
These are yams, I bought some.
You got an Instagram?
Yes, my Instagram page is Magic Taste by Shay, and my regular Instagram page is Tashaya XL.
All right, so why don't we let Craig G go ahead and taste something?
Um, whatever he want, I don't mind.
Y'all know y'all gave this to me, y'all, y'all ain't getting it back.
I think he say you want a fish. Oh, here it goes.
Tell me twice. It's supposed to be for all of us, we gotta share it.
That's Earl's plate, so. Oh, no, that's, that's Lou's plate.
Lou, I just want one piece of fish.
Cool, man, listen, man, we, we eat together.
Go ahead and try it, they wanna know how it tastes.
My mama made the best collard greens. Shay, what we got?
Let's see, let's see.
Don't even need no house. Salute Shay.
Try the fish. Since you want a fish.
Lou like, hurry up, eat that.
I need, I need a piece of that.
So I'm gonna take one piece, and I'm gonna pass it to you.
I got it, I got it, yep.
Earl got a plate, stop, whoever said that. How was it? Let us know.
Fried whiting on point.
Wash it down with some of that.
Shay, this whiting is fire. And I don't even eat whiting, I eat tilapia.
Oh, really?
But the whiting is fire, oh my God. I'm holding it in the trunk right now.
Shay, can I send you some stars?
So this is for y'all, this her chicken, rice, and, oh, so how you know how to, are you Spanish?
No.
No? How you know how to cook it?
Um, I have Spanish friends.
Girl, we are so excited that you came and tried and DJ Craig G got his food, too.
The food is amazing.
Yeah, the food is fire, oh my God. Man, how much this plate cost?
For the fish, it's usually sixteen dollars.
Oh, that's perfect.
A cornbread, a free soda or water, so, yeah.
That's perfect, with the mac and cheese and everything?
Yeah, you get two sides and one entree.
Damn, I'm gonna need to pay twenty-five. I don't eat beef and pork like that, so, this is perfect. I know my daughter watching this right now, mad as hell.
So let him try the, uh, Spanish pork.
Craig, you want some more?
I got the rings, I'm good. Somebody give me the itis back in. Let me breathe it heavy.
Oh, you know what? You like, you eat chicken?
Don't take this one with you back, because it's like, this one is, uh.
I'll try the chicken then for y'all.
You do fried shrimp and everything?
Yes.
This is the chicken, y'all. Oh, it's, it's like honey on it?
Yeah, it's honey on the chicken. I just like to say that.
Oh, my God, girl. It's hearty.
It spicy?
No.
We sorry, we sorry, y'all, if y'all home and y'all.
Oh, my God, girl. Pass it back.
I'm about to throw up there.
Fire. Everybody share this, everybody share this to their, to their, to their friends.
I like the drums. I like the drums. The house sauce on this, or something?
No, it's no spice, Lou.
Oh, all right, I, yeah, I don't like spicy food, that's why.
Jeff, please, I'm firing off.
Hey, you alright, you choking?
Listen, the collard greens is tasty.
What happened, you okay?
No hot sauce needed.
You choking? I know CPR.
My CPR card expired.
You alright? Yo, don't tell me you're pregnant. You pregnant? You alright?
You good?
Choking.
Oh, you choking real?
Oh, shit. Oh, you laughing at it?
Oh, I think, I think when she said she was giving me the food, back to back.
You wanna drink, you wanna drink? Give her a drink.
You alright?
Take a water. Yeah, give it this. Give her some to drink. You good? Hold on, y'all. We got a life situation over here, hold on. Lu saving her life, hold up, got several calls, you good? She is, we'll see. Hold on, y'all.
Hope nobody knocked her up. You alright?
Uh-oh, 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 y'all, uh-oh.
Hold up.
Might have to get her a water, man. Wait, she did, she did a high neck maneuver? That's what I'm talking about, Lu know his CPR.
It was something stuck in her throat?
She probably.
Oh, my god.
You need water?
You gotta have to stand up straight.
Yo, Lu really, yo, yo, Lu is doing the high neck maneuver on her, for real, for real. Yo, this is really going down. This is serious, I ain't gonna say please share, hold up. She good, she got it out, I'll get there, come back. She ate the chicken too fast, y'all.
Yeah, it's still there.
She got it out?
Yo, she choking still. Yeah. Hold on, y'all.
Shoot. She good? No? Head in the back.
You alright? It's still there? Do it again?
Lift up.
Lift up, lift up. Put your arms right there, across your chest. You good? Put them across your chest. You ready?
Go.
Go ahead, do it again. Wait. No?
Uh-oh, y'all, woolly, woolly.
Let me, let me do it again.
Yeah, he doing that, I got no trust, y'all.
Soda?
Water, 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 right there.
The juice, the juice, you want the juice? The juice?
I don't care, there's a water there, I don't know what water that is.
It should be, hold on, I think it's some water.
We got some waters right there? Lu, you want me to call nine one one or what?
You want us to call nine one one?
There you go, give her the water.
You need someone to push it down? Yeah. I'm thinking that, yeah. Just call them, yeah.
No, 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 no.
You sure? Yo, it's stuck in your throat, we have to. Hold on. Hold on, Earl, let me go in there and get a crack, she said get a cracker or something.
Oh, oh, uh, shit, I don't think, no. Hold on, y'all, stand. Stand by, y'all, this is serious. Round function, y'all. I can't even say anything, it's not funny, y'all. Hold up.
You got it? It's still there? Yeah, call them. You have to, you have to. Go ahead, Craig.
She said give me the.
Yeah, you can't play around with this, it's not coming out.
I don't know what you see, hey, hey, Lu?
Yeah.
How, how you doing? Um, I have an emergency, I have a young lady, she's choking, um, we're at nine, nine forty-five Pearl Harbor Street. Bridgeport.
Still there?
Thirty? She good, is she good?
What's your name, sir?
My name is Craig. Yes. Say it again? She good? Yeah, I'm, I'm not from here, but I think that's, that's the avenue. Uh, control host might be going to the, the, uh, local hospital.
He called them, he called them.
She good?
You called them right, Craig?
Yeah, yeah, they coming, they coming.
They coming out.
This is serious. We outside.
Nah, they gotta come, I don't care. Oh, alright, alright, it's over, we good, we good, we good, we good, we good. Alright, you got a napkin?
Wait, say that one more time.
Hold on. I think, I think, hold on, yeah, they just bring them, just, yeah.
No, 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 no.
You good, ma? Nah, they still gotta check you, y'all. You sure? Yeah, she says she good.
You gotta have them come out here, that's a eight hundred dollar ride.
Yeah, she, you okay, you sure you okay? It's alright, it's nothing.
She can sit in the car, sit, sit in my car.
It's alright? It's okay?
She ate it too fast, I mean, she ate the food too fast. She ate the food way too fast.
Yeah, that was just her.
Just share, just share, share the page.
Sure, you fine?
Think she's coming back right now.
Yeah, no, she's standing right here, looking at, at her phone now, uh, wiping her.
She ate the food too fast.
I'm fine, yeah.
Sure. Yeah, she.
Yeah, I'm here, I'm fine.
She's fine.
I have hypothyroidism, so my, my throat is small. No, I'm fine, we don't need it.
No, she's saying we don't need them now. Okay, nah, we wait, um, you don't mind, right, Craig?
You want it?
Nah, we wait.
You want me to bring, you want me to?
Okay.
You good?
Okay. 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 Alright, thank you.
Oops, she made it, y'all. She's okay, she's, she's A okay. And nine one one is still gonna come, um, mandatory that they already come. Yeah, they, they, they coming, and we, we changing the location too, I see this, we changing the location, Jesus. That food was so fire, man, we was trying to eat it so fast. But anyways. Big A, what's up, brother? Damn, I, I show up.
Soon, soon as we get our boy up here, look at how.
Damn. Gosh, man, but anyway, we gotta. So listen. Tell them something about yourself. Let me just tell y'all, everybody learn the hymn maneuver. High neck maneuver. High neck maneuver, please learn it, learn it. Yeah, Lu just saved a life, y'all. Yeah, he did. Lu just saved a life, cuz my card expired, and, uh, I don't know what I would've did. But, oh, there they go. Oh, damn, that was a quick response, damn, is that them? They said they coming or they ain't? They ain't coming. Nah, they said they had, they were coming. Oh, that's them, that's. They had to come regardless. Well, she's getting checked out, but she's good, and Lu did a great job. And if they, if y'all don't know, this is Craig G from Hot ninety-three seven. Listen, my number's been plastic around the world. I have my number, I have my number on a rap vehicle, my number is, my number is Googleable. So what's up, everybody? Hope everybody's doing good, I guess we gonna have to just do the show until they do. Yeah, yeah, listen, we thank y'all for still hanging in there, making sure everything is good, y'all ain't log off, y'all stayed live, we appreciate y'all. Thank you, and she is good, Lu did his thing, and that's, that's, that's all I got to say about that. But, tell them a little bit about yourself. Uh, DJ Craig G, Hot nine three seven, rider five, heavy hitter, top floor. Download that Top Floor Entertainment app, it's free, I said it was free, right? Android, Apple Music, it's free, it's an app for DJs, small businesses, download it, it's free. Unsigned artists are on there, unsigned producers are on there, uh, and again, we promote and help small businesses build their brand. We promote for them, so, yeah, download the app, Top Floor Entertainment, again, it's free, it's free, free. You know, you got a lot of apps, you got a lot of BS apps in your phone, delete one. Don't say.
At least one of them.
At least one of them. Don't say you don't have no more space, this is gonna be a great app for you. Yo, so, let them know some things you got coming up. Um, I mean, a lot of big events coming up, um, well, you know, the radio is the first and foremost, the radio is like the melting pot of everything, cuz the, because of being on the radio, I get to do everything outside of the radio, from, um, my weddings, my private events. My, uh, photo booth business, now I became an owner and operator of vending machines. So now, I own fifteen vending machines, and I got, I got them placed throughout Connecticut and Massachusetts. And the, the ambulance is here, y'all, you see the ambulance in the back? The ambulance is here.
We ain't lying, this is.
First and foremost, salute the Bridgeport, because this.
Look at the response sign, that, that like.
Within five minutes.
Facts, quit, quit, quit.
So I'm gonna get my, I'm gonna get my, uh, my plug on. So, yeah, I gotta do vending machines, so, you know, it takes up a lot of my time, but guess what, it's worth it seeing that, you know, you know. And, and I just put a, a, a vending machine, it's called the Micro Market, inside, uh, ABC News, and, uh, Springfield, Mass.
Oh, wow, that's big, right there.
A micro market in there, um, just, just busy, you know, just being busy, and blessed, blessed to do what I like to do. Seeing people dance on the dance floor, seeing people come out, have a good time. You know, they come all dressed up, and then they leave with their sweater over their head, sweating, having a good time. So, yeah, shout out to everybody, man, I appreciate the love.
Please share this.
Everybody from the two oh three, eight six oh four one three is all love.
Show your love.
Yeah, that's it, let's share, let's share the page, that's it.
Let me ask you one thing, what made you get into DJing, like, what's your best thing?
Well, growing up, living in, living in New York, grew up in New York, I grew up around hip hop, and when I say I grew up around hip hop, um, if you know your hip hop, right, if you say you, you know your hip hop, like. The, the founding fathers, now we celebrating fifty years of hip hop this year. So, the founding fathers, you know, your Cool Hurt, your Grandmaster Flashes, your Grandmaster Kaz, these are like your founding fathers. But then you had your Treacherous Three, Fearless Four, um, uh, Sugar Hill Gang, uh, Run DMC. Cold Crush Brothers, Crash Crew, these are like, these are those, these are those artists that came up in that era, so I was that little kid that used to go to these big, in New York, growing up in New York, we used to have, uh, block parties, big block parties, like, DJs come out, four, five DJs, they bring all their speakers out, they bring their turntables out, they, they, they wrap the speakers around the, the baseball field. And then they rope it up, and, and I was that little kid that was on the rope, like this.
Why you trying to find out?
Looking at this, this artist, or this DJ tear down, and, and I was just into music at a very young age. So then, finding out that I grew up, where I lived at, on one two nine and convent, if you know Kumo D's record, he got a song called Wow, Wow, West. Right? I grew up around that, right? Come to find out, Kumo D, um, and his mother and my mother were BFFs. You know, one of the, one of the goats, and, and hip hop, Kumo D used to babysit me. Before he became a rapper, before. So, all this is like dated, documented.
Nah, you really like, you really was birthed into this, like, like, for real, bro, that's the golden era.
More on the phone right now, we can discuss it. And, like, I just grew up around legendary. Legendary artists, um, uh, Treacherous Three, Fearless Four, and then my block became very popular because I lived right down the block, Saint Nick Projects, who grew up in Saint Nick Projects, Teddy Riley, right? Teddy Riley, who grew up five minutes from there, Big L, five minutes the other way, Dipset, right? Then Mace, uh, rest in peace to Big L, so, I grew up around hip hop in Harlem. Dougie Fresh, like, these are all legendary names. Red Alert was like the idol of every DJ, everybody wanted to be Red Alert, um, and it just was birthed into me, just straight up.
Facts, facts, facts.
Straight up, you know, I played high school basketball with the Rice High School, I played high school basketball, but then I just started loving music and just loving the DJ. And it kept, and it, and it kept me off the streets at a very young age.
You gotta love music for that, dude, I gotta ask you one thing, what's, what, what equipment you like now? You like the new equipment, or you like, like, old?
I mean, I, like, at the radio station, right, in ninety-three seven, we use, um, here she come. I need an applause, throw your hands up, wave, yo.
Hold on, hold on, put the thumbs up, put the thumbs up, she made it back, she made it back.
She's good.
She's good, she is good, uh-oh, oh, put the cracker down, get back in the seat, put the gloves back on, get back, right?
And then put the gloves back on.
Yeah, see, I can't stop, it's no matter what.
Share the page, share the page.
Please share.
Y'all just witnessed something y'all probably have never seen before online.
Yeah, who said my food is to die for?
It is. It really is.
Wow, she saw all those comments, she caught that one.
He careful with that bag.
Yeah, it's, it's stuck at the bottom of it.
Why you took it out of there? No, put shins back in there, I'm just putting it here.
Yo, she made it back, y'all, she made it back, she made it back. Share the page, y'all, share the page.
Why the fuck is it, oh, I was about to say, y'all, I probably look crazy, cuz I was. I was having a life or death moment.
She made it, y'all.
Where does Lu? Oh, shit, y'all.
Look at that, they throwing up the stars. They throwing up the heart things, man.
So, I'm sorry, you guys.
Y'all didn't log off or nothing, I made sure.
So, yeah, Tashaya's food is definitely to die for, because.
Oh, my goodness.
I will be going home and killing that plate, just like it tried to kill me. Okay? I think my lashes are all lopsided now, so where does Lu?
He went, he went, he went inside. That's how you shut a woman up, give her some chicken, huh?
I'm sorry, you guys, so I actually, I have something called hypothyroidism, if any of y'all know what it is, and it makes your throat like kinda like tighter, so, it happens all the time, I always get food stuck in my throat, but this is the first time that it was like for that long, so, it was kinda scary. You, you make some pudding?
Yes.
Yeah, I'll take some of that next time, but I am gonna eat this food, thank you guys for still tuning in. And I don't know where the hell Lu went, I was telling him to come finish the show, but he would not just come finish the show. Um, yes, so Jalisa, prone to choking. Because I have that, I'm prone to choking on food, so, um. Thank you, guys, um, I'm trying to wait till Lu comes back, so we can start on Craig G too.
So have you, have you had experiences before?
Uh, with choking? Yeah, so it happens all the time, um, it's happened, like, a lot of people don't know, cuz I live alone, and most of the time I'm at home eating alone. So people don't know, so when I, when it happens in front of people, they don't know what to do, but I'm, I'm usually able to like, you know, do it myself, but this was the first time that it was just like not going away, um. But yeah.
Is there certain foods you try to stay away from?
Um, I, I used to try to stay away from like dry foods, you know, but, um.
Shay, you gotta throw some extra gravy on it next time.
You gotta get some smothered chicken and some uh, something.
No, it was, it was smothered and honey. It was really good, but I was talking. And eating fast, cause it was good. And so it just got stuck in my throat. I was waiting for it all day, y'all, cause my friends, literally all my friends be like, her food is so good, her food is so good, but I never get to try it. So I was excited to try it, y'all, and then this happens. Ghetto, ghetto as fuck. But let me tell you, the, the, one of the firefighters was kinda fine. He's married unfortunately. What y'all talking about these comments?
Somebody said lubricate the chicken.
It did have honey on it, y'all. It was really, really good. Um. Somebody call loose phone.
No, no, wait, hold up. Let's ask him. So this is what somebody wanted me to ask you. Why don't you play Connecticut artists during prime time?
That is not true. Absolutely not.
That's what they said. Nah, I'm gonna let you speak on that.
Let's speak on it. So, so at the end of the day, the, the two R words that, that a lot of unsigned. I don't like to call them local artists. I call them unsigned. The two R words that they use a lot, that they should not be using is, is radio and rotation. Those are the two R words that they use frequently. Yo, how I get on the radio? How I get in rotation? So now if you wanna get in rotation, now your competition is not the other unsigned artists from your block. Or other un- unsigned artists from another town. You know who your competition is? Drake, Rihanna, Little Baby, Little Durk. Everybody that's got millions and millions of dollars of budgets behind their videos everywhere. They performing on all these big Grammy shows. Those are your, that's your competition. Cause at the end of the day, the radio can only play but so many records in an hour. Every two hours, every three hours, every twenty-four hours. And certain records, they got this thing called research, where record research. Where these are the most popular records. We play, I'm gonna tell you, we played a record, the Usher record, Good Good A Lot. But so does everybody else across the country. It's a big record. Worldwide. Usher about to perform at the Super Bowl. Usher got this biggest, he got the biggest thing going on right now in Vegas. Record is popping. I got a list of records that we play, right? I just, I just co- copy the list that we have at the radio station. That's trending. Records on TikTok, records got forty million, forty billion views. And these are the records that people are requesting worldwide. So now, when it comes to unsigned artists from two oh three to eight six oh to four one three. You guys gotta fit in where you can get in. So you gotta stand out of this crowd and make the best record possible. But you gotta come with the best buzz. You gotta come back with the best grind. You got, you, listen, we can't play everybody's record. So who's gonna stand out of this pot? So it's a soup. We got a thousand things inside the soup. Who's gonna stand out of the soup? We play unsigned artists all the time. We play it all the time. But now, the next thing. Who's the program director of Hot ninety three seven? Not me. Not Billy Bush, not DJ Santos, right? DJ Buck is the program director. A lot of people probably don't even know that, because they don't do their research. So that's where management comes in. So if they have great management, management will find out who's the program director. Reach out professionally. Not throw it on social media and say F ninety three seven or F the radio station professionally. Go there with a package, figure it out, link up with DJ Buck. Buck hears the music. If he likes it, he, he, he gives it a shot. Yo, did I leave that food up there? Chicken wing you want?
You ain't getting my chicken wing. Oh, it's here.
And give me a fork, please. I'm starving. I've been waiting up to share food all day.
No, me too. Tell me about it.
I've been, I've been, I'm starving, man.
Oh wait, you got the forks, um, Earl. So how long have you been at the radio, Craig?
So I've been on the radio twenty-one years. Um, when it started in two thousand, well now, shit, it's almost twenty-two. And it started in two thousand and one. I got on it the, the first, first couple of months that it opened up and started. At the end of the day, I'm on at five o'clock. So at five o'clock, it's pretty much kinda like the most listened time of the day. So I have to play the biggest records worldwide. The biggest records.
So that's like your prime time.
I mean, you know, morning shows is great, afternoons is great, um, six to ten is great, five o'clock is, is a prime time. People coming out of work, out of school, people wanting to go, people all over.
So you can't really, at that time, you can't do something like how I think DJ Michi does where.
So Michi's on.
So he's able to kinda have a little bit more.
He has a whole show dedicated to unsigned artists. So first and foremost, reach out to DJ Michi. Get with DJ Michi and get him the music. Get him, get him the music, get it clean. Get it mi- mixed and mastered properly, because you want it to sound good on the radio. So first and foremost, get with him. Reach out to him on the social media. I'm not throwing him under the bus, but it's DJ. The way it kinda works is like it, it'll start with him and then it'll trickle down. Like Billy Bush is on, um, eight to ten. It could go down to him, then it'll come down to five o'clock. So, but it has to start, it kinda like starts with Michi, because he does a whole hour full of unsigned artists. So I get a lot of complaints. We don't wanna be on at the, at that time. We wanna play, we want our music played at five o'clock. You gotta earn that. That's something you gotta earn, right? Who's one of the, I mean, I'm not saying he is the biggest in Connecticut. But he does a very good job. Chris Webby, right? Does a great job. He's gonna be on the show. He does a great job. He doesn't stress us for spins. He's not out here asking, yo, you gotta play my record. No, he's not doing that. But he's doing everything he gotta do to get his shows, his merchandise, his marketing. He got everything in order. Shows is all over, it shows is worldwide. Annoyed is another one. And there's a few others out here doing the damn thing quietly. And they making moves and they providing income for their family, their team, and, 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 I don't know, I mean.
So then is it that you agree with something that Lou just said? Uh, Lou just made a post not too long ago saying that ninety-five percent of the rappers in Connecticut don't take it seriously?
They, some, they take it seriously in the beginning, but a lot of them get discouraged and then they like F the radio, F this, F that. But I, I mean, I, I don't know, man. I, I, listen, if we can play everybody, we would. Right? If we can play everybody's record, we would. And I wish I could, but I got records that I gotta play that are way bigger. Worldwide. And if you look at BDS and Soundscan, and if you look at the charts, you look at this TikTok, you look at that. These records are trending. And these are the records that people want, they wanna hear.
What's like the biggest record you playing right now?
That Forty One Bent, big record. It's a big record.
I've never heard it either.
Them little, them boys from New York?
I just, it's a big record. It's, it's a bunch of records that's out here. That's, you know, some R and B records, some, some, some trap records that's, that's, that's doing it.
For sure, for sure, for sure.
How much, uh, someone said, how much do you charge the DJ?
It varies. It varies. The reason why it varies is because, like, if I show up to a club, it might be one price. But if I show up to your private event with me DJing, me light, bringing lights, sound, photo booth. All the, all the toys that I bring, that I provide at my private events, then the price is gonna be different. So it depends. Like, this is where a conversation where we sit down and we figure out the event you're doing. But if I show up to a club, it's one price. Depends. If I gotta bring equipment, then it's gonna be another price. And share. You see that share, right? So it, it all depends. This is where a conversation will be. I, and I hate just giving out prices because it, 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 it varies.
Nish B says you charge fifteen K.
She said that? Nish, you need to be my manager, Nish. Nah, but I do, you know, I do weddings and, and, and sometimes these people, they want it over the top. Like, they want, they want what they, what they see on TV. So I gotta provide for that. So, and it might, it might cost them seven thousand dollars. And guess what? They'll pay for it. Because this is what they want. So, you know, and if I don't have it, I gotta get it, you know? I gotta try to take care of the client.
Did you start charging more once you started doing the radio or?
As, as a club DJ? You know, you know, you know, when I, when I started charging more money, when I started figuring out, let me use this social media platform to promote. The, promote the, the party. So now the promoter is not gonna say nothing when I'm trying to charge him eight hundred dollars to go DJ your club. Because he saw me promote this event to help him win and I'mma win. So now, 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 some DJs ain't gonna like this. Social media is free, alright? Your price is your price, but if you do that extra, you gonna get that price without no complaints. You gonna get that price that you want, because you don't put that work in. Yeah, sure, I know I'm a great DJ and I know how to play everything for everybody, but it's the extra to help the promoter win. I'mma get called for part two, for part three, for, for, for four. I'mma come back and DJ all his parties. So I, you know, I want everybody to win, cause I'mma get mine. I'mma get mine. I'mma figure out how to get mine, you know? And if I gotta put his, 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 um, his, uh, his advertisement on my app, I'mma charge him for that. I'mma figure it out.
That's, that's big, because I know like one of the biggest topics with DJs versus promoters is that right there. Like DJs feel like it's not their job anymore to be promoting a party that they're DJing at.
Well, listen, I've had success doing what I'm doing, so I'm not gonna stop it for nobody. You know, I, I, I love, you know, DJs that, that, that show up, do their job and leave. I'm a little different. I'm a little different. You know, I'm not trying to be home on a Friday or Saturday.
Well, so your career on the radio, right? Um, not only is it just music, I feel like, but a lot of people feel like with Hot ninety three seven that it's kinda been the same people for a really long time. And that's one of the reasons why they don't kinda let other, you know, bring in new artists and play new artists. They feel like you guys all have the same kinda circle and you only play these certain artists that are from Connecticut.
Well, it's, it's, it's relationships. It's relationships. So the program director of the radio has relationships with, with the artists. And the artists that are complaining need to get this relationship up. They need to build this, they need to build this friendship. They need to figure it out. Again, figure it out. You got management, have your management work for you. If you don't have management, you need to figure out who you gotta talk to to get your record played. Um, because as a program director of a radio station, I salute DJ Buck. Cause he plays more local artists in prime time, from the morning show to the midday to the five o'clock. Than radio stations in New York. And I say, I'll put it on, I'll put it on, on live right now. So.
Okay, I just wanna say, thanks for having me. I'm gonna get.
Where you going?
I'mma give Lou his seat back, cause he's cold back there.
Like crazy. We're telling you, her food is so good, y'all. It really is. Thank you so much for coming by. Hopefully we'll have you on soon again.
Yes, definitely. Alright, thanks you guys.
Shay, have a good night. Thank you.
Alright, you too.
I'm so sorry, Craig G. Of course, the day you come, I'm over here choking and shit.
We're gonna remember this day.
Can you put her Instagram? I didn't know what questions they asked when I wasn't here. Can you put her Instagram in the chat, please? I know she gave you guys her Facebook name, but.
It's cold out there.
Put her Instagram in the chat as well.
You had me out there in the cold, man. I don't even know. I, I was listening to stuff, but I was listening to stuff, right? Did you ask Craig G, is, is top five artists?
I'm a little like out of it, so.
Craig, who, who your top five artists in Connecticut?
In Connecticut?
In Connecticut. No, listen, this is your opinion. It's, it's no being biased, so anybody, don't feel no type of way, none of that, please. It's his opinion. It's whatever music he like, don't feel no type of way, please. Top five, Craig?
I mean, I, I'm truly, I'm gonna say, I don't have a top five. I don't.
You don't have a top five?
I don't. I don't.
In Connecticut?
I mean, I, I like, I mean, I'm, I'm gonna tell you the, the ones I like. Like the ones, ones I have relationships with. Let's do that, alright? I have a great, great relationship with Annoyed.
Okay, yep. Shout out Annoyed. Shout out Annoyed, yep.
Don Z O P.
Oh, shout out to Don, Don Z O P?
Relationship with him. Uh, Runway Ty.
Oh, shout out to Runway Ty?
Relationship with him. Let me see, who else, who else, who else? Oscar Black, a lot, a lot of eight six oh, because I'm up there a lot. So a lot of eight, a lot of eight six oh artists, because they come, show up to my spots. And, and they, they send me music. And again, they know I can't play everybody. Cause they know that it's a procedure that you have to go through to get on the radio. Right? You don't have to pay to get on the radio. So use that money to go advertise your business. Go advertise, you got an album coming out. Go spend that money on the radio and say, w- w- um, new album out in stores this Friday. Go download it, go stream it.
On marketing.
Yeah, marketing. Spend that money on marketing. Get back to the old school guerrilla marketing of having your banners coming out the club. Whatever the hottest club is, have your street team outside, right? Spend that money, get that present, wrap, wrap your vehicle.
I agree.
Have that park, have that parked in front of all the hotspots.
We didn't even show you guys, she makes dessert too, y'all. I forgot, I'm sorry. I'm still thinking about it. But wait, somebody in the chat said, if you can't, if you can't name your top artist, can you not, can you name your top five DJs in Connecticut?
Okay, so I'mma always pu- put myself up there. Okay, no, uh, not, 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 not yourself.
No, no, it's fine.
I'mma still give you five. And the reason why I put myself there, cause I know how to play everything for everybody. And there was a time when I think I was the only DJ in Connecticut and Massachusetts that was working Friday, Saturday, Sunday, and three different area codes. And when I say that, I mean, Friday, when Club Low was open, I was out here. Van Dome was out here. I was playing there. I was in Hartford on one of the nights and I was in Springfield at Zone or Glow on those nights. This was consistently, right? So at one point, I was the only DJ. I knew that because no one was working in all three markets. All three zip codes, area codes. So, um, so now, if you go to like, I'm in the eight six oh. They got great DJs in the four one three. Amazing DJs out here in the two oh three. Like, I, and I, and I can't front, I love, like, Eazy is a part of my team. Perfect, that's my brother. We got a great relation, Big B, my brother. Herman Hamm does his thing, Rush. Me and Rush went to Dallas, Texas together. We went to All-Star Weekend together, right? So, so, uh, my man Chubbs is out there. So different DJs and, you know, fire. Um, oh my God, 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 keep going. Now we go, just say we go to the eight six oh, right? Just say we go to the eight six oh. We got amazing DJs in the eight six oh, Latin DJs. Out here, Santos is still out here. Stutters is out here. Like, these are like my brothers who, like, like, if, Sincetos out here. Like, these are DJs, Bill, of course Billy Bush. Come on, you know? Like, you got DJs out here that, that I play when I DJ with, like, like, I'll let them finish tonight. Because I, I got enough confidence in them that they gonna tear it down. So I don't have to, I don't have a problem with opening up for a DJ. That I know he's gonna tear it down. Um, eight six oh got amazing DJs again, and the four one three, of course. Who, who in eight six oh?
He just named them.
I didn't, I didn't really. Yeah, he didn't name. He named, he named two or three, which was Seantos and them Stutters. Yeah, uh, um, Perfect, Eazy, um.
So a lot of the DJs from the eight six oh that are on radio, Rex is an amazing DJ. Like, Big Man is an amazing DJ. So, um, and I, and I, not just because they on radio, they just, you know.
They good at what they do.
They good at what they do. They good at the time slot they're running. Uh, Hawk is an amazing DJ. Right? Then you still, and you go, you go to, you go to Waterbury, you got. Right, then you still, and you go, you go to, you go to Waterbury, you got Simmy's out there, you got Aunt Resto's out there.
Got Resto, yep.
So, um, Resto's part of the top floor family.
Nice.
Um, um, now you go to four one three, you got my man Aunt Dow, DJ Boogie, you got, um, who else, who else, Fire and Flex. So, so many, I just don't wanna leave nobody out.
I see, uh, I, I know, I know, he not leaving nobody out, by the way, y'all.
Trying to get everybody.
I know, he, there's so many people.
Listen, Tyler Greens was busting, and I still got some, so hold on, hold on, so my brother Sarge is out there.
Yep.
Right?
Sarge, Sarge is, is still in A six O, or is he?
I mean, he's back and forth to New York, he got a, he got a job for the, for the, for the city.
Oh, I thought he, I thought he moved to like Florida or Miami or something, shout to Sarge, man, y'all, you owe me money, Sarge.
Probably does, he probably owes me, owes me some money too. And, and, I'm, I'm just thinking, I'm thinking, I'm thinking, I'm thinking, hold on, hold on, give me some names, Lou, come on, Lou, stop playing.
Double T.
Double T. Me and Double T, together, uh, the twenty fourth, the old school party, me and Double T together, next week. Summer back out here hanging out.
Nice, nice.
Where at?
Hold on, y'all, y'all ain't.
Nish, I don't owe you forty, that was H, H owe you forty, not me.
Studio fifty four, thirty eight, Phil, old school, true school bash, me and Double T together.
Um, Jizza Torres, Anthill My.
Yo, Phil, thank you, um, G-Sat, you worked with G-Sat before, Phil, and Phil My.
Yeah, and, and, I ain't finished yet, can I finish?
I know.
Rest in peace DJ Jewels.
Jewels, rest in peace, can I finish? The one DJ that, that I kinda, I ain't mentor him, cause his daddy did, and you know who I'm talking about?
Yep.
Shout to DJ Bam Bam.
Bam Bam, shout to Bam Bam, man.
He was nine years old, nine years old, now he's out here doing the damn thing, and I love him for that.
Yeah.
There's plenty of great DJs in two oh three, A six O, four one three, and, you know, I salute them all.
That's big, well, um, I, I, I'm not sure if it was you that does mixtapes, right, for like, through Connecticut artists?
At one point, I did.
Do, did you stop?
I did stop.
Oh, you stopped, why, why did you stop?
I stopped because it was a lot of, um, just BS that I was getting from the, from the, from the flack that. So what I did was I charged each artist two hundred dollars to get on the mixtape.
Yep.
And.
Reasonable.
It was first come, first served.
Yep.
And what I did, and I proved it, and I showed them on video, that I was gonna bring it to the record labels, give them the mixtape. And if they wanted to contact any of the artists, that was my, I was the middleman.
And you did that for two hundred dollars?
I did that for two hundred dollars, right, so I did three volumes, and so I go to the diamond district, who do I run into? He reaches out and says, Craig, I'm in the diamond district, come see me, I met, I ran, I ran in the Calid. Then I went to the actual record labels directly, everybody in the record labels that's looking to sign artists.
Yep.
I gave them the mixtape, now, if they listen to it, that's on them, but I did what I said I was gonna do.
You, yep.
Presented part one, part two, and part three of Connecticut artists, now, if, 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 if. I don't know, I didn't put their numbers on it, I didn't put, I just put their names on it.
Their names, yeah, which I mean, everybody has social media or whatever and stuff, yeah.
This was like eight years ago.
Yep.
So, um, we were still getting out of that MySpace era.
Yep.
Into the Facebook era, into, I mean, um, um, Instagram wasn't even here yet, so I did what I said I was gonna do. Now, if some of the artists didn't feel like they got what they wanted, I, I, I don't know what to do. They get, they would, because at, at the end of the day, if you're looking, at the end of the day, the end of the day, if you're looking for an artist, you're looking for talent. You're gonna listen to this mixtape. Right, so if that's your job, to find the next up and coming artists, male or female, rapper or singer. Your job is to listen to Craig's mixtape, and I'm playing fifteen to eighteen songs. If they gonna listen to it, they'll know in the first minute they like it, they'll skim through it in twenty minutes.
I agree, so, I agree, if, um, so the reason you stopped was because of?
I just kept getting too much like online, like.
Too much pushback, too much negativity. I, I, I understand, cause I think it's similar to what, um, Huggy Bear was just saying about the concerts.
About the concert with Glorilla.
Yeah, people don't understand, like, there's a way to, that you have to do things, like, you know, they don't understand it, they don't understand the business aspect of. You know, the entertainment industry, and so they just knock what you're doing, or try to like be negative.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, I tried, you know, I did what I could do, somebody gave me a great idea, and I said, you know what, I can try it, I can put it on my social media. Get the artist, the artist was coming left and right, and end of the day, if I put twenty artists on there, I made four thousand dollars. Okay, cool, we, 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 we figured out the numbers, cause that's what everybody kept doing, oh, he's making this amount of money. But here, but at that time, I was pressing up CDs, and I, I, you know, CDs don't cost as much.
Yep.
I had to get the cover made, I had to do, do all the legwork, act like, I was acting like, you know, I'm a Mexican or something, we had to put in that motherfucking work.
Yep, yep.
And I did it, and then I personally went to New York, on my days off from the radio, or on my. I had to get up in the morning, do it, still get back to the radio for five o'clock, and I presented it to every label, I called the labels, like, I'm coming to see you, 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 and you. Tomorrow I'mma do you, you, you.
Yep.
And that's what I did, and I presented it to the person that's looking for the artist, and that's the A and R.
And you basically utilized the money that was basically given to you, gas, money, gas, and stuff like that.
People don't understand, like, they wouldn't even have the relationship were it not for you, you know what I mean, bringing this record to people that you already built relationships with.
So, 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 that, right, you're absolutely right, so the big, the big picture for it was to help them get signed.
Yep.
I wasn't acting as their manager, but I was the middle person, I was that, that middle, so if I got them signed, and they sign a million dollar contract. Craig, here's five percent, here's three percent, here's four percent, whatever, ten percent. Alright, now you got a deal, and now you got some money.
Yeah.
That was the plan.
And you know what, like, I, I would love for like, cause I know it's a different world that we live in now with social media, you guys. But like, a lot of artists, I feel like it's so important to educate yourself on how the industry actually works, it's not just. Having fun and making music, you know, there's an actual business to this, so, and it's not anyone's responsibility, it's not Craig G, it's not anybody's responsibility to teach you.
Right.
These things, you have to educate yourself on how the business, if you wanna make music for a living, if you wanna do it as a hobby, do what you want. But it is an actual business.
What, did you ask them, the question I see somebody asks, wh- why, uh, you think Connecticut artists aren't really blowing up?
Why do you think that?
I, I mean, listen, end of the day, the music you make, you, it's gotta be the right music.
Yep.
Like, the, the, the sound quality gotta be amazing, spend that money in that studio, you have to, Shader, I don't know. Yeah, bro, if, if I knew, I would have had an artist sign by now.
Yeah.
And I just don't know, you know what I mean, I don't know, you know, what artist is gonna blow, I don't know, I don't have that A and R skill yet.
Yeah.
I mean, I've picked a few great records, I can't even lie, but I don't have that A and R in my, in my blood. That's gonna say, this the one right here from Connecticut, this is the one from Massachusetts, and it's, I, you know, again, I salute. My boss DJ Buck, for trying to find the, the next big thing.
Yep.
From Connecticut, because end of the day, if somebody gets signed to a major deal, it looks good for the state, it looks good for the radio station. It looks good for everything, Rue Williams, Rue, Rue Williams, shout to Rue Williams, who's on tour right now, he's in Africa, performing in Africa.
Where he's from?
He's from Hartford.
From Hartford?
He's from Hartford, he's a singer, does R and B, you know, got a twenty seven pack of abs, yeah. I might have to get him on the show.
Yeah, we might, we might have to get him on the show. Craig, Craig might have to plug us, be the middleman on that one.
I just saw him on, in Africa performing the other day.
Yeah.
Which is, which is fire, um, Fuego Base, who's from Hartford, who'd signed to BASF. Um, um, si- signed with Benny DeButch in them.
Yep.
He's doing things quietly.
Yep.
You know, getting his shows, getting his money, putting his people on.
Yep.
Which is a beautiful thing.
So basically, they just gotta be consistent and, and, and market themselves.
I love that you said that though, Craig G, that you said, I don't know, like, you know what I mean, because I feel like there's so many people who think they have the answer. And they're like, trying to tell these artists what to do, and the reality is, it hasn't been really done yet, so nobody really knows what to do.
The labels are looking for the next big thing, that, cause they, they get the next big thing, they, they get the money, they get the credibility, they get the. Find his feet, they get all that.
Yep.
You know what I mean, like, the labels want, but the labels want you to do the work now.
Yeah.
They want you to put in the work, they want you to have your marketing plan, they want you to have. And then, then, all they gonna do is just give you the money back that you already spent.
That you spent, yeah. You ever, somebody ever sent you a wax on?
I get it all the time. I get all the time, I, I get, I get, I get records that says radio, and in the first thirty seconds, they kill three people. Second, they done shot four people from the block.
Yeah, oh, man.
First of all, let me give another shout to Toya Top Floor and Victoria, uh, those are two ladies that, that, that helped me with the app.
Yep.
They run the app, and they run the small businesses.
Yep.
So salute to them, man.
I think Toya's in the comments.
Yeah, shout to Victoria.
They both here.
Me and, me and Victoria have been friends for a while on here.
Oh, yeah, I see Victoria's.
Yeah.
Both, they both been like integral, they started from day one, when we, when we was on Twitch, um, DJing on Twitch, it was me, Toya, Victoria, and iPad. That was it, it was like three, four of us, and now, you know, we've grown that and to a, to a family across the, across the world.
Yeah, so, we normally play, we, alright, so we play a game, Craig, it's called Pick A Side. I sent it to you, I definitely did. Look in, look in the chat, didn't I, didn't I send it, Earl?
Say, tell him he did, he did.
Earl, oh my goodness.
Who been slacking today, I don't know.
Somebody sent my daughter, nah, who that? It's my daughter phone, but somebody said, hey, what you doing? Nah, so, there we go, right there.
So we play a game called Parker Cavos Pick A Side. You tired? Um, so we, we want you to, we're gonna name two options and you choose your choice.
Go ahead.
Alright, so, um, Tupac or DMX?
DMX, the reason why, I met both, DMX came to my house, DMX came to my crib. When I lived at it, one, two, nine in Compton, came to my crib, did a freestyle for me, um.
He did a freestyle for you?
I got a mixtape called Where My Dog's At, it's, it's out there, it's, 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 it's.
DMX one, he, he's one of my favorites, man.
Let me, let me tell you a quick story, quick story, we're gonna get back to the.
Go ahead, yep.
So, what I used to do, in the very beginning of Connecticut, when I started coming to Connecticut, I used to do Thursday, Friday, Saturday on the radio. I did Thursday, Friday, Saturday in the clubs, and then I went back to New York, right, so I would go back to New York, lived in Harlem. And I just told a story, it's somebody else's, too funny, so.
Uh, oh, Brian Poole?
Shout out to Brian Poole, who's a DJ, yep.
Uh, tell Craig G, DJ Calid said hi.
Yeah, he, he looks just like Calid.
I was wondering, I'm like, DJ Calid watching? Yo, sign us.
Brian text, hit Calid, tell him, tell him it's happening, so, so, I would bring Connecticut people back.
Yep.
At that time, the tunnel was open, right, we would go to, we would do the clubs in Connecticut, Sunday we go to my crib, everybody stayed at the crib. Um, we go to the tunnel on Sundays, or we might went to a club in New York, cause you know, New York never sleeps, New York party on Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday. So here we are, the famous restaurant M and G's, you know what I said, it used to be, it's where they made belly.
Oh, that's where they made belly.
Right, so, DMX is there, I'm there with two girls from Connecticut.
Yep.
Not gonna say their names, it's been twenty years, nobody's in trouble now. DMX takes the girls back to Jersey.
Yep.
Takes them with, just, but they my friends, they were my peoples, we was all going to a club, DMX fell in love with the two girls, they both looked different. One was light skinned, one was look Asian, and he took them back to Connecticut, he took them back to Jersey, I hope his wife is not listening.
Oh, man, oh, man.
He, he, all the other wife, other girl.
So, so, DMX brings them back on Thursday.
Yep.
Was going back to Connecticut, so what happened between Sunday and Thursday has nothing to do with me. He brought them back safe, that was my responsibility, get them back to Connecticut, but, so DMX is my choice, that's all I've ever said.
They, DMX was smashing, I mean, I can say that, right, I mean, I mean, he gone, he gone. He gone, but you know, he was smashing two Connecticut girls.
We don't know what happened.
Hey, that's a great question, were you around during the time when?
Absolutely.
You saw it?
I got, what, Terror Squad?
Yeah, at Innovations, Club Innovations.
No.
No, you weren't there, okay.
Terror Squad story, can I tell you real quick?
Yeah, yeah.
Quick, Fat Joe was scared to fly, if you know Fat Joe's history, he never flew on an airplane, him or Calid. Right, Fat Joe was scared to fly, Fat Joe asked me one day, we had a meeting in Jimmy's Bronx Cafe, he says, Craig. Would you be a fill-in for me in certain shows, Africa, all those other countries, cause he never flew.
What do you mean a fill-in, like?
Like, wanted me to perform for him.
What?
This was before, this was before Lean Back and all that, this was.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Right, this is, this was, I was four hundred pounds, Fat Joe was four hundred pounds, he wanted me to fill in for him, and perform for him.
Oh, cause you guys were like the same size, so like, I'm shocked, y'all.
I put on an army fatigue, right, so I said, I thought about it, calling back, and, and then now, mind you, this, this, he getting twenty five thousand a show.
Yep.
I would probably get seventy five hundred, ten thousand a show, right? Now, mind you, this is Asia, Dubai, all these big countries, right? I told Fat Joe, I said, Fat Joe, absolutely not, because there's gonna be some little Asian dude, that's gonna be like, you're not Fat Joe.
You Craig G from the mixtapes, I know you, top floor, baby. He wasn't, he wasn't there for the fight at Innovations, right? Yeah, he wasn't there, they asked, they said, yeah, they asked him about the fight.
I was there for the, I, I was there for the fight, the Max B French Montana, I mean, the Jim Jones French, that was in Bridgeport, I remember that.
At the parade?
That, where was that?
I thought that was at the parade.
French and him had a fight?
Yeah, Jim sent his people in there, and Chris was there.
So what happened, tell us, I'll feel.
Wait, really, I don't remember that.
It happened too mu- it happened too fast, you ever saw a DJ hit the floor so quick?
I, I really don't remember that, I just remember Jim and Jewels coming in separate times, though, and stuff, but I never knew that they had, um, an issue. What, before we even get to the game, what's the biggest artist you ever worked with?
Um, Ice Cube been in my house, uh, cause whatever, my, my house had, I had a studio on my crib. Shout out to my brother Pete Nice, DJ Precise, I had a studio on my crib, and I was in the mixtape game at that time.
Yep.
So, the labels knew that, I had the Fujis at my house too, Fujis at my house.
Wow, so everybody just came to your house?
They came to my house because the record labels brought them there.
Yep.
They get in the company car, they come, Nicki Minaj was at my house, brought by Fendi.
Her favorite.
Wait, Nicki Minaj had black hair, well, she was skinny, skinny, Fendi, Big Fendi brought her to my house.
Shout to Fendi, man. Fendi, oh, I caught Fendi, he said I owe him money all the time, I don't know why, all the time, right, Earl? He be like, yo, you owe me fifteen hundred, Lou, you owe me fifteen hundred.
Fendi, Fendi, Fendi brought my, my flat screen TV off me one day, he said, I need this TV, he, he picked the TV up and gave me fifteen hundred and kept it moving. It was a plasma, I'm a plasma.
That's crazy.
Yeah, so my house was definitely, definitely like a hub.
Yep.
Because S and S, if you know DJ S and S is, legendary DJ for Mary J Blige now, he made his mixtapes at my house. I made my mixtapes, Pete Nice made his mixtape, and then the artists came up to do freestyles, do freestyles, do drops. Um, and my house is legendary, forty one Convent apartment five B. Don't go there now, cause it's, it's four jazz musicians, and they all licensed the cabbie. They bust a cabin in his now. But I still own the place, it's a co-.
Oh, you still own it?
Still own it.
Okay, okay.
I've been renting out for them, they're supposed, in New York, you're only supposed to rent out apartment for eighteen months, they've been there sixteen years.
Nice.
So let that money keep coming in.
You ever work with Drake?
No, I met Drake once at Toe's place when he packed it up, that was the only time I ever met Drake or seen Drake, and that was it, one time.
Well, let's ask this question, Drake or Kendrick Lamar?
Drake.
Wow.
Drake, 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 Drake has kept my dance floors packed.
That's true. Even from bars and stuff, you going Drake or Kendrick?
Going Drake because I, I, I mean, Kendrick got a few records that I can play in a club. But Drake is gonna keep the dances, they gonna keep the dance floors packed, the girls gonna sing, the guys gonna, it's, 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 it's a win-win.
Wow, you got another one?
Sexy Red or Glorilla?
Well, right now, I'm gonna, I'm gonna go with Sexy Red.
Oh, Sexy Red?
Cause I see guys in there going skee wee.
Ask Craig G if he remembers what happened when Norrie showed up to a show late in Bridgeport.
I don't remember that. I don't, I don't remember that. I remember Norrie coming to Hartford to, after our spot, I used to DJ at called Divvy Divvies. And he never wanted, he didn't wanna get out the tour bus because it was in the north end of Hartford. And he had the Def Jam tour bus with him. And he didn't wanna get out because, cause he just saw all the hood.
Yeah, Norrie. Anyways, uh, Nicki Minaj or Cardi B?
Uh, Nicki Minaj. Nicki again has kept my dance floors packed, kept him singing. Cardi does it too, but I, if I had to go one and two, I'm gonna go with, I'm gonna go with, uh.
That's right. Hurry, I know what it is.
So Nicki is my top female rapper of all time.
And Nicki, honestly, like a lot of promoters used to bring Nicki out here all the time and now they act like they hate her. But that's another story.
We, we know you, we know you work for ninety-three point seven. But we wanna ask you, uh, about New York, cause you, you, you know, you've been in New York a lot.
So Hot ninety-seven or one oh five, Power one oh five?
I'm gonna go with Hot ninety-seven one because my heavy hitter brothers on there, Carmelo, Enough, and all the heavy hitters is on there. But I'm a friend of Flex. I was a friend, I'm a friend, still a friend of Mr. C when he was on there. Rest in peace to K Slay. So I'm, I'm been a Hot ninety-seven supporter and they supported me, but they never gave me an opportunity to be on that station. Power one oh five did. One oh five did.
But you know, I'm, uh, to, to that, I say, you know, I feel like Power one oh five came around during a time when things were just different, you know what I mean? Like Hot ninety-seven, you know, was around for so long and just like a lot of things, people don't change as fast. So Hot ninety-seven, I mean, how many people have been on their podcast, you know what I mean?
I, I drive, if I drive to New York, say I get up to Radio Six, I get to New Haven, Bridgeport by seven. First thing I'm doing is turning on Flex. Cause I wanna hear what Flex has to say. Like I wanna hear the gossip, I wanna hear the drama, I wanna hear the, the, the DJ envy news, I wanna hear all that. But I also wanna hear. Yeah, cause that's what it was like two, three weeks ago. I just wanna hear a good quality DJ that plays great music and shout out to my brother Self, Self is, is awesome.
They, they asked you a lot of questions in the comments, right? I like that one too. Um, Phil might ask, uh, uh, I think he said, was Frenchie or Jim Jones?
Wait, this one is.
You know, they, they one, they my brothers.
This one is Weeby one oh eight or Star ninety-nine?
Which one, Craig? I'm going Weeby one oh eight, me.
Where those ra- those radio stations? Where are they? I never heard of them.
Yeah, one, one oh seven point nine?
Are they in Connecticut?
They in Connecticut, yeah. Um, one is in, uh.
Star ninety-nine used to be in Bridgeport.
I think one oh seven point nine is in Derby.
Oh, well, that's cause he's, I forget that eight six oh, they don't have the same.
Yeah, that's right, that's right. So you guys don't hear, the one oh seven point nine is very big. They, they play, uh.
I think they're in New London or Brighton or Norwich.
I think, anybody know where they, where they, uh, located at? Um, yeah, cause they're, Linda Reynolds, you know Linda Reynolds? Yeah, that's what I'm saying, like, oh wait, Linda, shout out to Linda Reynolds, I'm sorry about that. I'm sorry, yeah, she is on ninety-three point seven. I, I do, I listen to her a lot when, uh.
Late Night Love.
Babe, call in for me, babe.
Tell everybody you love me.
Tell her, shout me out right now, babe, tell her right now to shout me out, Lou, yeah, shout out to Lou McLean, yeah, yeah. Oh man, that happened to me one time. I did it, I got through one time, somebody, yeah. Yeah, nah, they, uh, who else? It's, it's a lot of people, um, yeah, they, they asking, he don't wanna answer that. The Max B and Jim Jones and all that, Frenchie, those is peoples, man.
Those are all my peoples.
Yeah, so he not dividing or nothing like that.
Don't ask me about Mace and Kim. So Lou, I don't know if you know, I used to DJ for Mace.
Someone said you went on tour with him.
Right, I was on tour with Mace. So we, when Mace, Mace got off the Bad Boy Tour, right after Biggie passed away. Um, so Mace had to go on his own tour, own, 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 own run, so he hired me as a DJ and we went fifty states twice. You know what I mean? And then we started doing the TV shows, uh, one oh six in Park, Planet Groove, remember Planet Groove?
Planet Groove, yep.
Jay Leno, Jay Leno and Carson Daly.
Wait, did he pass away?
Um, damn, what I was gonna ask you, um, do you still talk to Mason, any of them?
Not as much. But he, he recently reached out to me a couple of months ago for a show to DJ for him in Atlantic City. But I couldn't, I had something going on. So he didn't have a DJ at the time. And then when he came to Connecticut, he came, um, Foxwoods, I, we, I went backstage and we linked up. We don't talk like as, as, as we used to.
That was like, this was actually one that I was gonna put, but I think his choice is obvious here. Someone said Bridgeport or Hartford.
Listen, I like hip hop.
Craig, Craig is a politician. He is a politician.
I mean, Hartford, Hartford made me, you know what I mean? I lived in Springfield for twelve years, Springfield made me, you know what I mean? But, but my first Connecticut club, I don't know how old y'all are, was the Melibus. That was my first Connecticut club, the Melibus. We was heavy on Crown Street back then.
Yo, listen, he doesn't, he, hold, hold on, Earl. He doesn't replay, uh, he's, somebody asked, why does he, uh, replay the music on the radio? He know, it's the program director, it's not him.
Well, I, I actually interviewed DJ Misha, he said that it's because the ti- the regular radio listener only listens for like fifteen minutes or something like that. And so they have to kinda repeat the same songs because people are only listening in fifteen minute intervals.
And every time you get in your car, you wanna hear your favorite record. That's just the bottom line. Yeah, we have our mix shows like twelve, five, nine, and the weekends, we have our mix shows. And we still have to play those popular A records. So A records are like the biggest records in the world. The Scissors, the Drakes, all the Beyonce, whatever, whoever the big popular artists are, whoever's selling the most, moving the most. And, and, and the people request these songs all the time. So they, people wanna hear their favorite record every time they get in the car.
Somebody, so you, you, you ever DJed, um, in Innovations, right, in Bridgeport?
I don't know, man. I don't remember.
That, I mean, you remember, you remember the club from New Haven, the Innovations is, uh.
Always remember my first club.
Oh, your first club, okay. That, that was the club where, uh, Big Pun and them and Fat Joe was at.
The story that Fat Joe told, it was Club Innovations, the story about him being in Bridgeport and the big fight that happened.
And you never DJed there at all?
I don't remember.
Yeah, somebody asked, uh, I, I'm pretty sure he don't know Frankie the Terminator.
Someone asked me?
Somebody, uh, listen, you never know, I might have, I might have played there. I mean, I, when I, when I think of Bridgeport, I think of Club Low, I think of White Eagle.
Innovations was before.
Somebody said that health journey you had was inspiring, I guess.
You know, well, what I did was I stopped going to the diners after the club. That's just the bottom line. I would just stop going out to eat after the club, sleeping on all that grease. And, and, and went, took my ass to bed, drink a glass of water and went to bed. For a while. But then, but also in twenty eighteen and twenty nineteen, I had hip replacements. So I, I had bone on bone, um, for a couple of years and then realized, I thought I had arthritis in my knees. So I had bone on bone on my hips, so I got them both replaced. And so after that, I became a lot more active. I was DJing with a cane for a while. I would sit down, DJ, get up, sit down, get down, sit down and get up. But then, after I got the, the hip replacement, a couple of weeks of rehab, I was feeling amazing.
That's great.
Somebody asked, I don't know, they trying to ask personal questions, are you married with kids?
I have two amazing kids. I have a, a sixteen year old named, uh, Ava Moore and then my, my little one is eight, her name is Mia Moore.
Nice. Do they play sports?
My, my sixteen year old, she does volleyball. And my eight year old thinks she's a TikToker. My, my sixteen year old is, she has a four point two five GPA. She's, she's college bound and she's looking and she's, she's ready to like, we ready to get these free scholarships. College is DJ cupcake. So I tried to, I tried to teach her to be a DJ, she gave it up, she, but we named it DJ Cupcake.
Toya said that, DJ Cupcake, yep. He, um, he, he doesn't compare himself with your, um, your, like, your, your coworkers and I like that, like Billy Bush and none of that. Like you don't do, none of, cause somebody asked in the comments, like, can you scratch better than my man Billy Bush?
Billy's one of the top, the scrap, best scratchers in Connecticut. Absolutely, I'll, I'll put it, I'll put the money on it. I'll put the money up. Billy gets busy.
I don't think he know, I mean, I don't think he know about that. We talking about Craig right now, we not talking about Mr. C. Yeah, nah, we talking about Craig right now, so. If you was to work with somebody, Craig, who, um, in Connecticut, who would it be?
Artist wise?
Yeah, artist wise.
Just somebody that's, that's hungry, that's, that's hungry that, like, if I say, yo, we gonna go to the studio this week, we gonna knock out four songs. Right, but, but I'm not into production, I'm not into that, but I would love a freestyle from an artist. And but if I say we gonna go in there and knock out five songs, let's do it. That, that, that hunger, that type of hunger. Um, speaking of, um, hunger, I just put out a mixtape, me, me and my brother P Nice, Jenny Boom just put out, she has a Bad Marriage For Life. Podcast, so we just made the mixtape for it, which comes out this weekend. We did a mixtape for it.
Okay, that's, that's nice. So how much would that, would that cost for an artist if they wanted to reach out to you to do something like that?
Well, let's build a relationship first. Let's build a relationship, hit me on Instagram, at DJ Craig G, same thing with Facebook, let's talk, let's chat it up. Let's figure it out, cause end of the day, I can't DJ all my life. I got other things going on, but I, and I, listen, I can't wedding DJ all my life. I can run a photo booth business, I can run vending machines, life for a long time. But if I can sit back and, and, and help an artist build his brand, build his, like, I know how to market. That's one thing I do know how to do.
So, so y'all heard him, artists, build a relationship with him. Hit him up, like that, that's all he's based upon right now. Uh, somebody asked, what about Sholi? You ever heard of Sholi?
Sholi does his thing. I apologize for not saying his name, no, no disrespect.
Nah, 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 again, it, it's, it was a question in the air. And that's how it is, like your mind just go blank, cause you got a thousand people right there and it's like, damn, I can't grab that one, I can't grab that. So I get it a lot, like, like, you know, when, when answering questions like that all the time and stuff. But where can they follow you at, Craig?
At DJ Craig G on everything. Listen, I already, I already, we already threw my number up there. We were talking to the ambulance. They actually got my number.
Can, somebody asked, can you tag his, oh, you tagged him, alright.
And he should be in the, in the description too. Thank you to Monica for the stars, that's my cousin y'all, so thank you.
Thank you, Monica. So y'all find, digger his name right there, um, and that's how you, that's everything, right, Craig?
Facebook is Craig, Craig Moore. They made me use my government to get the blue check, so I had. So, but you know, Instagram, at DJ Craig G, um, I have an app, it's called Top Floor Entertainment. Download it, it's free, it has DJs on it that has, has their music, has theirs, has their mixes. I got unsigned artists I put on there, unsigned producers, so if you make beats, get at me, and of course, small businesses. And when I go live on Twitch, you can see me DJing live on the app. So, and, you know, I'm just trying to, you know, put all this together, make it work and share, you see that, right, share?
I almost said make sure he shout us out, he actually did, right?
Yeah, he shouted out, he shouted us out on part, uh, oh, they said tomorrow though.
Five o'clock, I got y'all.
Five o'clock, tune in.
Five fifteen is when we first talk. I got you.
Tune in, ninety-three point seven tomorrow, man, he gonna shout us out tomorrow, five fifteen.
First of all, let me shout y'all out, right? Cause y'all got a platform and, and, and like Huggy said, y'all building it, building it, building it. And it's growing. I remember y'all started about a couple of years ago, I think the car was a lot smaller. Y'all was elbow to elbow.
And we didn't have none of these. We didn't have none of these, we was using this right here and stuff like this, so.
Shout out to Trav for the stars.
Can you put my daughter on, please? Put my daughter on. Hold on.
Thank you, Toya.
Hold on. Mia. Mia, say hello, you on, you on Park Car Combo. I'll call you back, kick your ass to bed. I'll call you right back.
She ain't going to sleep till about, uh, midnight. But yeah, it was a pleasure though. Oh, that was you? Oh, that was, she was calling back?
Oh, someone asked if you're gonna be at the Wayne concert.
Oh, yeah, that's what I was gonna ask.
I'm not gonna be at the Wayne concert, I got a private event that day. Yeah, I gotta, I, I do a lot of private events, so where I don't have to be in the clubs every weekend. And of course, you know, private events pay way more.
The last question, um, did you hear the, uh, the, what's that, the Rollin' Two Hundred D joint from K Slay?
K Slay, I've heard some of them, I heard the Oprah Murda part, I heard the Kick Your Free part, I heard a few other people, I haven't heard all two hundred. Might take me a week.
A month, I'm gonna actually listen to it tomorrow. Yeah, shout out to Papoose too, man. Shout out to Papoose, man, I, I like Papoose a lot.
Nah, Papoose, Papoose is a good dude.
Yeah, definitely, but Craig, it was a pleasure, man.
This was memorable. Next year, when Facebook does the memory. The whole, you know. Food for, to die for.
The food to die for, to Shay and Moes.
Shout out to the Shay and Moes, man.
I had a great time.
Thank you so much, Craig, man.
We had a long time.
Leave the food alone, let me get that.
I'm about to kill that.
Where's the legendary chicken wing at?
He one of you?
I hope you taking these crackers, so.
They just saved my life.
And we just told everybody, they need to get some training.
Yeah, I, um, she, I'm, I'm telling her, like, put your arms like this. She's like this, I'm like, no, you gotta put your arms like this, like.
I'm so used to doing, like I said, I live alone, I'm so used to when it happens, just fixing it on my own.
I literally took the class maybe five months ago.
But it wasn't working.
You like this, I'm like, bruh, Tashay is looking at me like, do we know what he doing? Like, and I'm like, yo.
Poor Tashay as she was trying to.
And then, and then somebody said, the pat on the back don't work, and I'm just rubbing your back like. Craig, I'm pretty sure, Craig, you got your, uh, you certified, right? No?
I'm not certified, I can't even lie.
I wasn't doing mouth to mouth, though, I'm sorry.
That's what he said to me, he had the nerves to say that to me, when he came to me, he was like, I'm not doing mouth to mouth, but.
But watching, watching what transpired just now, I really gotta get focused on twenty twenty-four and get, and, and.
And get it done.
Absolutely.
Get it done.
This is for real, everybody, for real.
I'm actually gonna buy the, um, now that, now we be having a lot of, um, businesses with restaurants, I'm gonna buy the thing where it like holds on. You seen it before, right? I'm, I'm gonna buy that now.
Okay, let's keep that on deck.
Yeah, we gonna keep that on deck right there. You gonna put it right here, Craig, right, right there.
Shay coming back with more food.
Yes, Shay's definitely coming, I know Shay, yeah, Shay food, she, and she's not even, uh, Puerto Rican.
No, y'all, it is so, like, I swear, everything that people have been saying, it is, is good.
Yeah, it's definitely fire, man, but we come to.
Say that's the best fried chicken I had in Bridgeport, honestly.
I think, I mean, I can't say, I mean. I didn't have the chicken, yeah. I was biting into it and then that's when you started that. I was mad, I bit into it and I felt the juices and I was like, yo, like now she wanna.
Anyways, right, so thank you so much, Craig G, for coming out.
I had a great time.
Thank you, thank you so much, man. Y'all already know where the following at, y'all know where the following at? Listen, next week, who we got next week?
Chris Webby.
Oh, Chris Webby next week.
Y'all gonna ask him about his top five?
We is, we gonna ask him. Craig didn't give us his top five today.
I went around it.
He went around.
Please, please, if, if I, just get with me, I, I'm, if I'm unfamiliar with your music, get it to me, let me listen to it, seriously. But I don't have that segment on my show where I play this artist unless it gets approved again. By DJ Buck. And if an artist doesn't come up to me, show me that love in the club, then I don't know who these artists are. So I'm in four clubs a week. Pull up on me, let's link, let's talk, let's chat it up, let's, let me hear some music. So, that's it.
He's easygoing to talk to, man, that's all he's saying.
I just wanna win, I want everybody to win, let's win together.
Build a relationship. Y'all already know, I'm Lou McLean. And we got, we ending off the show with Craig G. Thank, thank you for the stars, good night, child, we see y'all next week.